Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting Monday, May 1st. I apologize we're a few minutes late, we're a meeting in closed session. I will request that the deputy city clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz is absent. Vice Mayor Jornz Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, there are four of us here this evening. As I said, we did meet in a closed session and I'll invite the city attorney to report out if there's any reportable actions.
Thank you Mayor Kate, no reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you, so welcome, we are glad you're here if you're in person or listening in virtually. And we appreciate the staff who is here as well. For some of you folks who are here tonight, it might be one of the first times that you have been at a Severnfield Council meeting, welcome. We're delighted that you're here. And I did want to just take a moment to talk about public comment and how the meetings are run. So after the meeting formally opens, which the deputy city clerk will open, there's open time for public expression. So that's where anyone can speak to us on any topic if it's not on tonight's agenda. If there is, oh, and the agenda by the way, it's out in the lobby and it's also on our website. If there is a topic on tonight's agenda that you would like to comment on, it is most appropriate and helpful if you hold your discussion, your, excuse me, your comments until that item is announced. So the council can hear your input as part of that item's discussion. For example, if you're here to speak about the police incident after the city attorney's comments, we'll wait for those comments after he gives his remarks. And as the city clerk will explain, you'll have two minutes to speak and of course, you're always welcome to send emails or to talk with us outside of the council meeting. So just wanted to do a little explanation about that, it just helps us in our deliberations when the comments are matched with the agenda item. Also on tonight's agenda, you're, you might notice under the consent, there are several proclamations. And we're not going to be reading each of the proclamations out loud tonight, sometimes we do. But I just want to highlight and confirm the importance of each of them. They include proclamation supporting wildfire preparedness month, public service recognition week, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, National Police Week, and Mental Health Awareness Month. These subject matters are important to our community and our city, and I'm glad they're included on our consent agenda. Before I turn to the deputy city clerk, we like to include a land acknowledgement as it's an important part, an important opening to our meeting. We acknowledge that the present day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of the Great and Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. So again, welcome, and I will turn to the deputy city clerk who will describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting, thank you.
Thank you Mayor Kate, before we begin, we would like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel. Now through the completion of agenda item 5A, which is use permit revocation for nightclub at 842 Fourth Street. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the Zoom toolbar, it looks like a globe. And we have posted a link to the Zoom meeting in the description of the video on YouTube. If you are attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your mobile device, please come see me and I will get you set up with a device.
Good afternoon, Charles, Spanish interpreter here. So the council chamber is muted, but I think you've ready for my rendition into Spanish. If the audio tech could unmute the council chamber so you can hear it moving forward, that would help as well, thank you. Interpretation to begin. So antes de comenzar, queremos anunciar que la reunión esta noche del ayuntamiento va a estar disponible en español para interpretación simultánea y consecutiva proporcionado por intérpretes calificados en el canal de español. A partir de ahora hasta completar el artículo de la agenda 5. A sobre el uso de la revocación del permiso. Este, si están presentes en Zoom pueden unirse al canal de español por hacer clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de herramientas de Zoom que parece un globo de radio. Ya que según una, oh, y ya también, ya publicamos un vínculo, un enlace de la reunión de Zoom en la descripción del video en YouTube. Si están presentes en persona y no tienen acceso a la reunión de Zoom por medio de su propio dispositivo móvil, pase conmigo y yo puedo prestarles un dispositivo para que puedan escuchar la reunión en español. Para recordarles favor de hablar despacio para permitir que el intérprete exprese sus comentarios de forma eficaz.
Thank you Charles, this meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. And members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171, using the meeting ID 844-3204-9611 pound and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comment. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two minute timer to help you stay within the two minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, and as a reminder for all of us to sleep, speak slowly, that is one thing that Charles had said. I will try to remember that myself, so thank you. And as I just explained, now is the open time for public expression and traditionally we use these cards, so I'm going to read the cards, although it looks like some of these might apply to an agenda item again. We prefer if you speak during the agenda item, but of course you are welcome to speak at any time. So Rhonda Cutter on the reusable footwear ordinance, would you like to wait? Okay, let's see, you're back there. Pam Reeves. Stephen Bingham. Okay, I'm keeping these in front of me. And just so you know, if you didn't fill out a card and you still want to speak, it's okay, you don't have to fill out a card, but that we're just, it helps us to get our hands around it a little bit. Tara Evans. Thank you. Heidi Merchant. And Heidi, you have two. You want to wait, okay, just making sure, okay. So that's going through the cards, but of course, now is a time for, a public time for open expression. So if there's any item that you would like to address the council on, not on tonight's agenda, come on down. First I'll address the chambers before we go virtually, yeah, so come on down, thank you.
Hi, how you doing?
Pull the microphone closer to you so we can hear you, thank you.
My name is Anthony and I had, my council member is Mr. Hill. And I had sent Mr. Hill an email last night, we have a belated issue at the apartment complex where I reside, where we're going to lose seven Italian cypresses, sixty years old, nearly sixty feet tall, because of a fire code issue, because they're thought to be incendiary and a problem. So in, in the email, I kind of laid out a fairly good case, I think, that shows a lot of mitigating circumstances that are in place and in play for the complex where it would make it very hard for these things to be in a place where they could cause problems for fire, being stucco walls, lots of pavement encroachment, cement, fire retardant materials, it's just, it's unlikely that it's going to cause the kind of problem that they fear. And I, that is in a PDF form, I delivered it to the city manager's office, so you guys should have access to it. And I'm going to submit also supplemental material for that. What I want to say is, I think that the county has the wrong notion of, of which tree, which type of cypress is incendiary. And the support material speaks to that, it's actually, it's one of the, it's, it's one of the least, it has unusual properties of, for, for not being flammable, that's being studied now to help prevent forest fires. And we're going to lose seven trees tomorrow morning if we can't get some sort of exception from the county, and we're just hoping to have that conversation, that's what we're asking for. And anyway, here is the support material and I actually tried to burn this and it doesn't light.
Thank you Anthony, and I think the county, you mean the city, because you're, you're within the city, no, I just want to make sure you're within the city property.
I'm from a county.
No, no, it's fine, I just want to make sure that you were in the wrong jurisdiction, so I, Chief White is in the chamber and really that, that conversation around the fire code, we're, we're not going to have that conversation now, but you can have it with Chief White, who is sitting over there, and I'm sure the two of you can go into the lobby after, when it's appropriate. And that would be the best way. Yeah, wonderful, thank you. Yes, hi, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm also a resident at these apartments. A little history, they were built in 1962, initially with the idea of being accessible to lower income residents. I was told that at the time, about half of the fire department and possibly some of the police department lived there. The, the complex also won an award for its design. In my remaining minute and a half, I'd like to share with you, and these trees, we just found out about this a couple of days ago, we've done some work to try to quickly save these trees if possible. This is an article from Smithsonian Magazine. Can Cypress Trees Help Suppress Wildfires? Researchers in Italy and Spain suspect that Cypress tree barriers could diffuse forest fires. It reports on a peer reviewed journal in the Journal of Environmental Management. So there is scientific support here that suggests that these trees are not quite as dangerous as they have been perceived to be. One thing in here that's mentioned in the article, well, I, I think that's the point, I, I've got time remaining, but I think you've got the point. There's, there's a peer reviewed article, it was also reported in other news magazines, so we're asking for your help to do some fast work, if possible, with, with the fire department so that these trees can not be cut down tomorrow morning, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and I'm glad Chief White is here, he, he is the individual that can help you with this conversation, thank you. Okay, anyone else in the chambers like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Not seeing anyone in the chambers, Madam Deputy Clerk, city clerk, is there anyone virtually?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and to comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've heard that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands right now.
Thank you, this is Ava Crisanti, can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can hear you perfectly fine.
Thank you, I, I know that you have a police item on the agenda, I wanted to provide a little context. The county is overseeing something called civilian oversight of the sheriff, they have a working group. And I wanted to, to kind of provide a little caveat for people who want to see reform in this county, which I certainly am one of them. The county cherry picked a fifteen person working group for sheriff civilian oversight that specifically excluded any Latinos from the canal. The, it's mainly middle class people on this, on this working group. There was only one black person from Marin City included on it, and that happened to be a pastor. This working group subsequently engaged in twelve meetings that were not posted on the website. They said they were noticed, but we don't know where they were noticed, they certainly weren't noticed in any way that, that should have been. And when I CPRA'd the meeting recordings, even though it was said that all twelve were recorded, I was given only four. The four that I was given are pretty appalling. They needed anywhere from one thousand to two thousand responses on their survey. They handed off to the dysfunctional Human Rights Commission members who brought back something like five hundred and sixty-seven, I think, responses. So it's, it's not a significant number of responses. Even the woman from NaKol said that the requests being made for oversight were insubstantial. And so, you know, when you do oversight, you need to make it more democratic.
We have one more at this time.
Hi, good evening, can you?
Yes, we can.
Great, great, hi everyone. And it's Andy Naderis with the Agricultural Institute of Marin, thank you council members. I'm just here tonight to announce that we will be relaunching the downtown San Rafael Farmers Market. Excited about this, the farmers market will be open seasonally from June first through August, every Thursday from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. The market will be located back in its original location on Fourth Street between Ada Lutens and the Plaza. The market's a wonderful opportunity, I love produce, enjoy delicious eats, buy crafts from local artisans, enjoy live music, kids activities, and community connection. We welcome everyone at the market and proudly accept fresh benefits, quick benefits, and also offer market match beef, fruits and vegetables. We're also hosting a community Thursday, May 5th, at Vent Downtown San Rafael from 5 to 6 PM, where you can come and learn more about farmers market and how you can get involved. Venture is Logan 20B Street, and we hope, hope to see you there, thank you so much.
Thank you Andy, and you're cutting out a little bit, but I will just repeat, he's invited. He's inviting everyone to a community meeting about the Farmers Market, May 5th at Venture Pad, which is on B Street at 6:30, I think was the time.
I don't see any more comments at this time.
Oh, 5 to 6, sorry. The Vice Mayor's correcting me. 5 to 6. Okay.
I don't see any other comments. I'll just give it another second or two. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the initial public comment and turn to the city manager for the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and city council members. I know we have a long agenda tonight, so I'll be very brief and just bring up one upcoming series of meetings around our, the city council's goals and objectives for the next couple of years. It's that time of year where we're looking at goals and objectives and also the annual budget. So we have, the council typically has a couple study session formats that are informational, looking for input from the community before actually adopting a new set of goals and objectives for the year. So our next meeting on this topic is May 8th, so week from today. There's a study session at Dominican from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Creekside Room. And we have information on that on our website, citiesofsanrefel.org. But that's the one opportunity where the council will be discussing the goals and objectives. And no decisions will be made. It's just an opportunity to start that conversation. And then we're going to come back in this room on May 15th and have a probably longer conversation regarding the goals and objectives and the performance metrics. So that's another opportunity. Again, there won't be any decisions that night. It's just another opportunity for the community to see the draft goals and objectives and weigh in on them. And then ultimately, they would be attached to the city council's budget in one of your June meetings for approval. So that's the process. We have a couple of opportunities for, for the community to weigh in and see them and comment and discuss. And then ultimately, they'll be, would come to the council for approval in June, but we've got these additional meetings in May, where they'll just be a discussion format only as we work towards the June date. So I just wanted to continue to inform people about those meetings because it's an important process of setting the city council's goals for the next couple of years. So it's going to be important to relate to the budget and bring through as we bring our budget this fiscal year. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will turn to my colleagues to report out on the meetings that they've been attending. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it was Earth Day on April 22nd. So I had the chance on Friday to attend the Congressman Jared Hafman's environmental roundtable. And it was really nice to see other, many NGOs and see what's happening at the federal level. And then on Saturday, I was able to participate in the Earth Day Volunteer Day at the Discordia Marsh. And I know there were other events throughout the city. So it was really great to see the community, the neighbors coming together. It was actually organized by one of our neighbors. So I'm really, really grateful to have, you know, the community involved and caring so much about our neighborhoods. Then the next day on Sunday, I attended the youth town hall with other mayors and council members in the county. So I think almost all the towns and cities were represented. And it was really nice to see them so, you know, interested into elections and having a voice. And so it was, it was really good to be there. It's one of my favorite events so far. I'm hoping that we are going to get more representation from kids in San Rafael in the future. And then the following day, Monday, I attended the MCCMC Climate Action Committee meeting. That's Marin County for councils and mayors, something, right? Just talking to other cities as well and towns and see how we can work together and see which initiatives around the environment we want to bring. And then finally, we participated last Monday in the community conversations. Thank you to Supervisor Dennis Ralony for inviting us. Mayor Kate was there as well. It was very well attended. It was via Zoom and great feedback. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three events to report out on. On Sunday, April 23rd, I attended Earth Day Marin at the Mill Valley Community Center by the invitation of Al Grummett and Bill Carney of Sustainable San Rafael. Met with students from Terrill Linda High School in a youth climate workshop to examine several policies, including the green building reach codes, EV strategy, and the reusable foodware ordinance in our agenda tonight. Engaged with many of our community members and other electeds from around the county. On Friday, April 28th, attended the San Rafael City Schools breakfast with the Assistant City Manager Christine Ililovich, as well as Ellie Judasey, as well as leaders from the San Rafael City Schools and Miller Creek School District. We got to meet the incoming San Rafael City Schools Superintendent Carmen Gaisels, who's coming from the Truckee area. So she'll be starting as the current superintendent. Jim Hagaboom makes his exit in the summer. So we welcomed Carmen coming into the district. And then finally, on Saturday, April 29th, I served as a judge at the annual Margie Burke Speech Tournament at the Ross School. Thank you to every student who participated. I was deeply inspired that sixth, seventh, and eighth graders could stand forth and perform, whether it was improvisational topics or predetermined speeches. I could never have done that when I was in sixth, seventh, and eighth. So I commend every student that showed up and bravely stood forth. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Well, the theme of my week was education. I was delighted to attend the San Rafael Chambers Excellence in Education Awards. It was a pleasure to see eight different educators throughout the county, including our very own from San Rafael, Stacy Farrell, who received an award. And what was wonderful about it was everyone coming together and give the awards, but our businesses stepping up and contributing as sponsors to not just give an award, but give a $500 check to every one of the award winners. The Redwood Credit Union matched everyone and was just a fantastic participant to see our businesses realizing the importance of education in our community. So that was a very exciting event. The very next night, I was pleased to represent the mayor and the rest of the council at the San Rafael High School Hall of Honor induction ceremony. Two Hall of Honor inductees were added. Mike Diaz, who is a teacher, coach, and athletic director, took one of the girls' basketball team to the state finals. And many of his players were there to speak on his behalf, in favor of him. And in addition, Scott Hayes, who's a counselor and a strong arts supporter. And if you've ever been on the campus of San Rafael High, the auditorium there is called Hayes Auditorium, and it's named after him. They were both inducted into the Hall of Honor. The first Golden Bulldog Award was given out for volunteerism. Gary Pops McFadden, if you've been around, you know him as Pops, who has been a volunteer since 2002. And this is true, I saw him in his cart on the way to volunteer at that school today. He was also, he also received the Golden Bulldog Award. So both of those education events were very, very wonderful this time of year as graduation is coming up. And to remind us of the important role that education has in the future of our community. So it was, it was my pleasure to be at both of those. I also attended a San Rafael sanitation board meeting. And we had a presentation on our reserve policy. And we also honored Cindy Hernandez, who retired after 30 years of administrative support to the agency. She was, she was greatly, she will be greatly missed, but we certainly wish her well and her well deserved retirement. And that sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it's been a busy couple of weeks. I also attended an Earth Day event with the Business Improvement District in San Rafael Clean Business. That was on the Friday prior. We met down in the Plaza and folks literally cleaned the downtown. It looked great. We really appreciate everyone that showed up for that event. Councilmember Hill and I attended the AC Marriott Hard Hat Tour. You probably, if you are in San Rafael, live in San Rafael, have been driving around, you've been watching the hotel. It's very close to opening up. It'll be opening up July, I think, is when they'll have a soft opening. And it was fantastic to see, they have a bar on the upstairs roof, and you can see Mount Tam, and you can see Baldi. It was breathtaking. So really looking forward to that opening up in our community. Last week, we had coffee with, coffee with a cop. And there were several police officers that were there at Miracle Mile Cafe. A shout out to an awesome breakfast place, and they were a fabulous host. We had lots of folks drop by and start chatting with us. And now my theme will be, oh, actually, I have a couple more. Baywave. Baywave is a county organization that our jurisdiction, as well as several other organizations, are involved, and it has to do with sea level rise. We had an excellent presentation on the Bothin Marsh, which is obviously outside of San Rafael jurisdiction, but it's in Mill Valley and really is visionary in terms of how do you start to integrate sea level rise with the current infrastructure? And then we had great news there. So Caltrans, we all know state agency, has local representation. Our local reps have applied for an internal Caltrans grant for more planning around sea level rise, which is really great, especially because the area that they're applying for starts in San Rafael and comes all the way down to Mill Valley. So that will be our two Marin Cities. So those are the two endpoints. And the more, and it'll be unduplicated efforts, obviously, building on the efforts that have already been done. So that's exciting, and we'll confirm once we hear that they have received the grant. And finally, Smart, or two more things. Smart, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. We had, we are in person now, so driving up to Petaluma for that. Folks are using Smart to get to the Giants game. If you are a Giants fan, last year, we had a little bit, a few available trains. This year, we are running them now all the way through the end of September 13th. So lots of happy Giants fans. And we've already seen in the initial trains, three times the average that people would be riding at that time. Didn't say that right, but for the Giants games. So really, really popular. That will continue. And also during that timeframe, so that will be running to the Giants until, for the Giants games, till September 13th. All the dates are on the website. There's also a kindergarten through high school, K through 12, youth ride free, youth ride free, June, July, and August. And the amazing thing about this program, it's not just Smart. It is fantastic because Marin Transit, Sonoma Transit, Petaluma Transit, and there's one more that I didn't write down, but they're all participating in having youth ride free this summer, which is fantastic. So help us spread the word on that. The ridership at Smart continues to grow over the, even before pre-COVID levels. We're excited about that recovery rate. In terms of specific items that the board considered and voted on, there is going to be a micro transit pilot program with Sonoma Airport. Micro transit is really what it sounds like. As opposed to having big buses, it's having smaller vehicles to transport people almost that last mile. What they found at the Sonoma Airport is that it's too far to get from Smart Station to the airport. So we'll be doing a micro transit, timing both with when most of the flights are leaving out, leaving out of the airport. So stay tuned. I think that's a great way to really encourage ridership on Smart and serve people who are flying out of Sonoma Airport. In addition, currently at Smart, you are not able to stay overnight in a parking lot. And the board has agreed to look at having a small fee that people could pay to keep their car there overnight if they want to go into the city or up to Napa. And there will be, it will be only available to people that are actually riding on the Smart train. So it's not a overflow parking lot for other uses. It's really for Smart riders. And then two more things on this. The board approved a three day commuter week pass. I brought that up too at our last meeting. Smart's very proud of it. I think we're the only transit agency that's recognized commute patterns are not what they used to be. And so really looking at how do we make a financially viable and appropriate product for people that are using Smart three days a week? So the board approved that. And then finally, big news, they have started, or will start this Friday and Saturday, the Starlighter. Okay, it's the same train, but they're calling it the Starlighter. And what it is, it's a late night trains on Friday and Saturday night. What they found is that folks either wanted to go up north or come down here, and the last train wasn't that late. And so I don't have the exact time. It's on the Smart website. But you can now come to San Rafael, have a nice dinner, maybe catch a movie, and then take the train going back north. So very exciting things happening at Smart. The last item I'll report out on is TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin. Again, exciting things happening. TAM reported out, the general manager reported out, that they have started working on the inner, the exchange at Freitas and Civic Center. And for those who have been longtime residents of San Rafael, that has been something that the community's been asking for for a long time. So the project initiation has begun on working on that exchange, really having it be even more usable for both pedestrians, bikes, and cars. TAM will also, there's a sea level rise theme here. I mentioned the Caltrans grant. TAM has a sea level rise program, and it's funded through Measure AA. So this is something that was called out in the ballot measure, and the voters voted on it. And what it will be doing is identifying vulnerable infrastructure, primarily transportation routes, and it doesn't help identify the range of options. It will take a while, probably over the next 18 months. But again, when we're talking about all these sea level rise different programs, and luckily, there's a lot of good coordination going on because we don't want duplication of efforts. But it's fantastic that that money that the voters have voted on will start to be applied to looking at sea level rise planning. And then finally, the majority of our TAM meeting was talking about school crossing guards. School crossing guards are always near and dear to parents' hearts. And there are always many intersections and not enough funds to cover all of the intersections. So about eight years ago, eight, 10 years ago, TAM did a set of criteria that is an algorithm that is really fair across all of Marin County, looking at everything from number of cars, number of pedestrians, the, how the intersection set up, and then figuring out who could be funded. So that list was approved. And there was quite a bit of discussion about the actual assessments, which if you want to know, you can ask me about it later, or you can watch the meeting, but I won't get, I won't keep going on about it. But it, but it was ultimately approved. So, so thank you. And for, again, for those that are new to the meeting, we always like to have these report outs. We sit here on the dais and do our work on Monday night, which is really important. And we're also out in the community the two weeks in between. And this is our opportunity to provide those updates. So I will now move on to the city attorney. He has a status update on the police investigation. City Attorney Rob Epstein.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, members of the council, members of the community in the chambers tonight. After San Rafael police officers conducted an arrest last July in the Canal neighborhood, the city hired an outside investigator to conduct an internal affairs investigation of the incident. That investigation has been completed. It has been eight months since the city hired the investigator. Many members of our community have expressed their concerns about the incident and the amount of time it has taken for the investigation to be completed. From the outset, I also have been deeply concerned about the conduct of the officers involved in the incident. And I agree with and share the frustration that others have expressed about the lengthy period of time it has taken for us to get to this point. The city has received many, many requests for a copy of the investigation report, which is a confidential personnel record. Although I would very much like to do so, and I know that my colleagues at City Hall feel the same, the city is prohibited by law from distributing copies of the report to anyone at this time and likely will never be able to do so. At this juncture under the law, there is some information that the city can disclose, and there is other information that the city cannot disclose. And I want to take a few moments to explain the law that applies here. It is my job as city attorney to ensure that the city complies with the requirements of the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, and other laws governing disclosure of what is often called the people's business. When anyone makes a request for material that is under the city's control, the city is committed to providing all information that the city is legally permitted to disclose. But the city is prohibited by law But the city is prohibited by law from disclosing certain types of information. Under state law, personnel records, in particular, police personnel records are required to be kept confidential. There are certain exceptions, but the general rule prohibits disclosure of any information contained in an officer's personnel file. Statutes and case law have applied this principle of confidentiality to police internal affairs investigations, like the one I'm discussing, discussing here tonight. So at this juncture, there are many things I would like to say. However, the law places a substantial constraint on what I am able to disclose. This is what I am legally able to disclose. The investigation is complete. The investigator conducted numerous interviews and reviewed all other available evidence, including body cam videos. The investigator evaluated the officer's conduct against police department policies and performed a comprehensive analysis, which is reflected in his report. And as I've said, the report is now complete. It has been provided to the police chief for review. It is now up to the police chief to decide what action is appropriate, if any, in response to the report. If you go to cityofsanrefel.org and click on policing in San Rafael, there is another link that goes to this chart, which is a step-by-step flowchart of the police disciplinary process. I think the link on the website is timeline of police investigation process. I'd like to comment on where we are in the flowchart tonight. And I should add that copies of the flowchart are also available in the lobby with tonight's agenda and staff reports. So in reference to this flowchart, which lists steps one through 11, we are now on step nine. Excuse me, we are now on step eight, except that the division commander is not involved in this matter. So the report has been provided directly to the police chief. Thus, the next step is for the police chief to carry out as he deems necessary and appropriate. The first next step, which is step nine, is for the chief to review the report to determine whether it lists findings that policies were violated by the involved officers. If the answer to that question is no, then the disciplinary process is complete and the matter is closed. If the answer to that question is yes, then the chief must determine the appropriate level of discipline up to and including the potential of termination of employment. If the chief goes down the discipline path for any particular employee, then the employee will be provided what's called a notice of discipline, which is step 11 on the flowchart. Any such employee would then be entitled to contest the notice of discipline in an internal appeal called a Skelly Appeal. Assuming that any discipline remains in effect after a Skelly Appeal hearing, it is only after the hearing, that hearing, that the discipline would become final. And any employee who is the subject of discipline has the right to further contest their discipline in a confidential binding arbitration conducted before a single arbitrator in which the city would have the burden to prove that the discipline imposed was not an abuse of discretion. As I've said, we've received many requests for a copy of the investigator's report. And unfortunately, the city cannot legally provide a copy of the report to anyone. The report and its contents are exempt from public disclosure under Penal Code Section 832.7. The city will ask the involved employees whether they are willing to waive their right of privacy that applies to the report and its contents. If the employees waive their right of privacy, then the city will produce copies of the report to anyone who requests it. In the event that the police chief takes any action regarding any employee as a result of the investigation, the city will similarly be prohibited from disclosing any such decision by the police chief, unless the employee agrees to waive their right of privacy on that information. In other words, if the chief were to impose discipline against any of the involved officers, the city will not be able to disclose any details about the discipline. This legal principle was made clear in a federal case that was decided last year involving the Fresno Police Department. In that case, the court held that the city of Fresno, the mayor actually of the city of Fresno, violated the law by disclosing information from an internal affairs investigation of an officer, including the fact that there were findings made against the officer and that the officer had been terminated from employment. I am glad to provide the case citation to anyone who would like to read it. For these same reasons, I request that the city council refrain from making any public remarks regarding this pending confidential personnel matter. In closing, I'd like to offer this. The city must follow the law as it exists, as it exists today. For those of you who are frustrated and disappointed by the constraints imposed on the city's ability to disclose information about the investigation and about any future potential discipline that may be imposed on any officers, please know that I and my fellow city colleagues, and I think I could also speak for the city council, share your frustration and disappointment. We are, however, bound by the applicable law. My only suggestion for those who wish the law were different is to communicate those opinions to our state legislators who have the authority to change the law. Thank you, Mayor Kate. That concludes my remarks.
Mayor Kate?
Thank you.
Is it okay if I take a moment to swap out the interpreters?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, thank Charles. Yes, of course.
Thank you.
We're all set?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to return back to these cards. And again, if you haven't filled out a card, don't worry. You can still come down and provide public comment. So at this point, are there any comments from the public on the city manager, council member, or city attorney reports? And I will start with going through the cards. Mr. Stephen Bingham.
Good evening, members of the council and city manager and city attorney. It's with a heavy heart that many of us have personally come here tonight. And it feels like we're in shackles. And the worst part is the lack of trust that the community in general has because this has taken so long. Regardless of what the law provides, there's absolutely no reason why it should have taken this long. Absolutely no reason. And that was intentional because they thought we would go away. But we haven't gone away. And in closing, I want to make one specific comment because your hands are tied with this. But I would like to get a commitment from the city council in one of the most supposedly liberal counties in the state, that you will work to get amendments to the police officer's bill of rights, which is an outrageous intrusion on the rights of citizenry and simply reflects the enormous power of police unions in this state. And it seems to me this incident gives you an opportunity to call on other states. One of the things you do is make recommendations on state legislation. And you should join together with other counties to get legislators to change the police officer bill of rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Pamela Reeves, I actually had your card. No, so you're coming. Yes, you were the next one.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for your report. My name is Pam Reeves. I'm from Terre Linda. I thought I was coming here tonight to comment on the Foodware Ordinance. And unbeknownst to me, I read the city council report every time you have one. And until dinner last night with a friend who's in the back of the room, I had no idea that that asterisk meant that this was happening tonight. I mean, it was just mind boggling to see a little tiny asterisk down under your, under your reports. And I too have a very heavy heart. It just makes a person ill to think the rights that police officers have versus the rights of people who are so harmed by actions. And so I just hope you can follow Stephen's suggestion to work with our state representatives to get this changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Tara Evans.
Good evening. My name's Tara Evans. I'm a fifth generation Marin County community member. I grew up in Peacock Gap, have lived in San Rafael my whole life, currently live in District Four, but still my family owns property all over San Rafael. Every weekend, I see parents and guardians drinking their mimosas, wine and beer in our San Rafael parks, on the side of soccer fields, tailgating in, in the parking lots of the Little League games, walking down the street with solo cups of booze and beer on Halloween, trick or treating in neighborhoods like Peacock Gap, Sun Valley, Gerstel Park. And what protects these people? The color of their skin and the neighborhoods that they live in here. In San Rafael, white people won't experience what happened to Mateo. Being beat down, suffering lifetime mental and physical injuries for an open container of beer because of the systemic discrimination and culture that clouds the lens of those police officers who patrol the Canal community in one way compared to all the others. Separate, but equal. As a member who assisted in writing the recommendation for the implementation of AB 1185 in Marin County, I've learned that developing and implementing permanent and effective oversight is not a race, but a journey. It's an important, it's so important that we take that journey together multiracially, multiculturally, as one community. And that all of us acknowledge that racial prejudice and inequity that have always existed here in San Rafael's police culture, an American ademic which draws its roots from slave patrols and the colonial mindset. We must acknowledge that at the center of this is the need for culture change of San Rafael's police department. And in this moment, effective civilian oversight in San Rafael has the opportunity to improve public safety by allocating resources to creating and sustaining systemic change because you hold the key right here, right now. Justicia para Mateo.
Thank you, Tara. Heidi Merchant.
Hello, everyone. A lot of us are here tonight because we care about our community and we are principally outraged. We want to talk about things that are missing. Trust, dignity, respect, integrity, and accountability. Things that are important to all of us. Trust has been compromised and the longer it takes to decide whether justice will be served for Mateo and the officers involved in his brutal beating, the longer it will take to rebuild trust. We all saw body cam camera footage. We saw the lack of dignity and respect shown for Mateo, both during the verbal questioning and during the brutal beating that he will struggle psychologically and physically with for the rest of his life. We saw Officer Nail laughing and saying Mateo tried to put him in a headlock. We saw the absurdity of this allegation from a six-foot-plus man with a gun for a five-foot, maybe, man standing in front of him. We heard Daisy Madrigal say it got a little out of hand, a little. We heard the sergeant laughing and saying about his subordinates that they gave him a good experience reviewing use of force incidents. These comments caused shivers down all of our spines and goosebumps on our skin as we expect to be treated by the police every day and every situation with dignity and respect, even when we've had a beer. We know the reports contain the same lies because he was charged with resisting arrest. The body camera footage shows Mateo being brutally attacked, beaten, slammed into the pavement, causing a broken nose, a concussion, a shoulder injury requiring surgery. We saw him face down in his blood. Like Tara said, this would not have happened to me had I been standing there drinking a beer. We want justice and we want it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. So those are the cards that I have. But as I said, if you didn't fill out, yeah, come on down. And if you'd like to introduce yourself and say where you live, but you're not required to, that would be great. Wait, come to the microphone so we can get you, hear you.
Call me Concerned Citizen. I wasn't prepared to make a statement. I wasn't going to. I like sitting in the back of the room and just observing. But as a person who's experienced trauma at the hands of police officers myself, I can tell you the two guys in the back of the room are really concerning. Why are they here? We're talking about violence from those guys. Same team, same uniform, whatever, thin blue line. They're not going to speak against each other. In fact, they're prohibited from speaking out against each other. You guys can't speak out against this because of personnel issues in their union. But their body cam footage, and I'll say the only reason they got it was because Frigoli pressed charges without reviewing it for whatever reason. But it's public. But it's public now. And Marin County residents, San Rafael specifically, has no longer afforded the privilege of saying that doesn't happen here. Not in my town. They're not racist. It doesn't happen here. It happens here. You saw it. Now you've given, you've been given an opportunity. What are you going to do with it? Are you going to leave your hands tied? Let us, if we don't like it, we can change the law. No. How about Mayor Kate call McGuire's office and say, this isn't right. This happened and we can't talk about it. We want change. We want something different here. This is your chance to use the opportunity presented against you or let the union tie your hands.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to approach?
Hi, my name is Theo Emerson. I'm an attorney. I live in a Mill Valley. I represent Mateo in his action, or future action, possible action against the city of San Rafael. Mr. Epstein, thank you for the report. I just wanted to point out that the statements made tonight were different than the statements made at the February 21 hearing in this, in this room. And Mr. Epstein, I will quote your, your words from that hearing, referring to SB 1421. I'll explain as follows. The report about the Mateo incident will be a disclosable public record if the report contains a sustained finding that an officer used unreasonable or excessive force. So I believe what everybody can assume in this room from what Mr. Epstein said tonight is that the whitewashing of this matter by a quote-unquote independent investigator that was that was retained by the very department that was being investigated found that there was no use of excessive force, which is a travesty of justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others like to comment? Yep, come down.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Spalter. And my wife, Lowell, and I employ Mateo Julio. And he was our gardener for many, many years and is just the most delightful, wonderful person you could imagine. He and his wife and his two children were endeared to us. And when we learned of what happened to him, we were heartbroken because at first we read the police report and we couldn't believe that this five-foot-zero, maybe 125-pound individual took on a police officer, talking about Brendan Nail, six-foot-two, 250 pounds. But that's what it said in the police report. And it said that he attacked him, that he resisted arrest, and he tried to put him in a headlock. So that's all in a police report. And I think police reports are under oath by the police officers. Once you look at the video and the excellent work that Dan Noes did on ABC 7, you realize that all of what was stated in that police report was false. I have two concerns. One, as the city attorney just said, this report may never be disclosed. What does that mean? Does that mean that there is no accountability? And that Brendan Nail, if he is fired or whatever, the next police department he goes to and says, well, how did he behave on the last police department? That report will never be disclosed. Secondly, Jose Julio has not been able to work since July 27 of 2022. Meanwhile, Brendan and Daisy are receiving approximately $80,000, $90,000 a year as police officers, plus benefits. They're still going to receive it. We have no idea when the police chief is going to make his determination. And then we have a skele arbitration. And then after that, we have a further appeal process. How much of $60,000 are going to be paid to these two officers during that period of time? And perhaps you can, if I could ask the city attorney, can you respond whether they're going to be on paid leave continuously?
If you could wrap up your comments, thank you.
Oh, thank you for being polite and letting me go over my time. I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Oh, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Brenda Camarena here. I'm a Marin County resident. I'm not going to repeat what everyone said tonight. It is obvious, we all witness, we know what happened. Whether you want to disclose that he was guilty or not, we already know that things happened. And I'm just here to tell you that we're not going to go away. This is not going to go away. Just because, you know, it just makes you believe what are they hiding? Are you, you don't want to address this case as it should be? Because there's things that the SRPD or our law enforcement here, the sheriff, they all have something to hide. And if they make him guilty, there's going to be a Pandora box and a lot of things are going to be open? Is that why? Or is it because we're Latinos and we're not welcome here? We're human beings. And whatever happens, whether it's in Mateo's or Julio's favor, in his case, we're not going to go away. And justice needs to be served. And you, as our representatives in our city, we trust that you're going to do something about it. And that's our hope. But we know what happened. We all saw it.
Thank you, Brenda. Oh, wait, I think Samantha's coming down. Excuse me, sir. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I had no intention of speaking tonight, but as I'm sitting here listening, I feel nauseous. I feel my heart racing. And all I can think about is Mateo, his family, how traumatized he is. It's so incredibly difficult to live in this community as a person of color. I'm tired. And I just want you to sit with this discomfort and to think about him. I've never even met him. And I think of him as like my uncle, as a loved one. That's what it means to you when you feel like you're a part of a community. And for nine months, you've dragged this on. And it impacts us. It impacts me and my body.
Thank you, Samantha.
Hello, council members, Madam Mayor, Mr. Epstein. My name is Anthony Label. I'm also an attorney for Mateo. I'm a lifelong Marin resident. I was born and raised here. I now live in San Francisco. And I think what you just heard was an absolute whitewash of what happened. When this independent investigation was started, the idea was to try to give these citizens some sense that what happened that day would be looked into by an independent investigator. And we now know that that independent investigator took eight months to get to the decision that the city wanted to get to from day one. Tyree Nichols in Memphis took less than two weeks to decide to fire those officers and less than three weeks for them to charge them with murder. The evidence on this videotape, on the body cam footage by the officers, is incontrovertible. Those officers lied. And the fact that this report now cannot be discussed, its findings cannot be disclosed, the discipline imposed on the officers cannot be disclosed. And Mr. Epstein has just asked you, members of this council, not to talk about your views on the conduct of the officers that day. That is a shame.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the chambers before we go to the virtual? Okay, I see someone else coming down. Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Taub. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I have heard so many people, elected officials, attorneys, say that their hands are tied. Please, your hearts are not tied. Your heads are not tied. My heart is so heavy and so full of outrage for the brutalization that happened to a member of my community. It's wrong, and you know that it's wrong. And what you can do is put all of your weight behind changing the culture and the practices of our police department. No matter what happens with this investigation, you know what's true. We all know what's true about this. And we know that accountability and transparency and culture change is called for now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Collin. I also wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I thought about it. And I wanted to appeal directly to Councilwoman Kurtz, who isn't here. I reside in her district. And right after the incident, I wrote to Rachel Kurtz and to you, Ms. Collin. And I was so upset by what happened because right around the same time Mateo was brutalized in my neighborhood in Terre Linda, we were celebrating a yearly barbecue, like we do every year. Without permits, we block a street. There is open containers. There's amplified music. There's a lot of teenagers. I'm pretty sure they're sneaking beers. So who knows how many laws are broken? And this happens every year. Everybody in the neighborhood knows about it. And we just have this enormous privilege where we can just do it and not have to worry about consequences. And this hardworking man, we all know the Latino community is the backbone of San Rafael. And I'm just so upset by how this man was treated and how, when I reached out, the response I got was, yes, this was awful. We will forward your letter to the police chief. I could have written the police chief myself. I know how to use the Google machine. I wanted his bosses to tell me they would handle the situation. And I'm really discouraged hearing from you that we can't talk to our elected officials and we need to go directly to the state. So please tell me, what is the point of having a mayor and a city council? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Kalisha. I work in San Rafael. Appreciate the time to be here tonight. I live in Nevada, but I am here because I want to talk about power and who has it. With all due respect to Mr. Epstein telling us to call our electeds and bring this to the state is a gross misuse of the power that all of you sitting up here already have. And we all saw the body cam. We all know what happened. We all know what's happening in this country and where justice is going. And it's not, a lot of things are becoming illegal that shouldn't be and vice versa. So I ask you, if you want to uphold laws that don't agree with your conscience, because a community member that you are responsible for is suffering. And I don't want to go into everything that everyone else has said, but I do want to talk about who's got power and how we can use that together to protect those who are being abused, who are being violated. And we know that there are a lot of white folks in this community, myself included, with a lot of privilege. We've talked about how we can have an open container anytime we want. We know this isn't right. And I'm asking you to use that power to see justice done, not to have your hands tied, not to say, there's nothing more we can do. I think we've pretty much had it with that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kalisha. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay.
My name is Diane Martin, and I live in Mill Valley. And I have known Julio for 10 years. I have, right after I saw the pictures, I called my nephew, who is a police officer in Washington, and I explained to him everything I saw. And he said, Diane, if you are actually accurate about what you saw, they should have been fired. He was very upset. And he said, what happens when this happens is all of a sudden, it makes it harder for all of us police officers to do our jobs. So this has to be done correctly. And I have a question for the attorney over here. Thank you for explaining this timeline, this time system. What I want to know is, how long is it going to take to get to from eight to nine? Can you give us an idea about that timing since all of this happened?
So thank you.
Months ago?
So keep going with your comments. You still have time, but we received all the input before we responded.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. So we will speak, are you done with your public comment?
Yes, I think so. I'd like to know the timing there.
So actually, the point of procedure is we get public input from everybody. And then we'll come back and answer any of the questions that have been asked during the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I thought I saw someone else's hand over here. Yep, come on down.
Good evening, council, everyone. I've been following this case for some while through the attendance at these meetings. And today, I didn't hear a determination. I just heard a status report saying that they reached a certain position in this process. And neither guilty or innocent charge has been made. So I understand the anger in the audience, but I haven't heard anything that says anything has been decided. So until something is decided, I'd like to leave my opinion of how it occurred until then. I do think it's taking too long. And what that seems to be government, everything in government, seems to take a long time. One thing I wanted to say, when I looked at this diagram, I was wondering if there were similar diagrams that the police or any government agency uses to say, this is not really something that we wanted to deal with, and maybe we could do things differently. And maybe there is a process that they go through that enables them to take their real-life experiences and use those to look forward and say, hey, if we're going to behave in a certain way, next time, we'll do it slightly differently based on this particular experience. I have to believe every organization within the government has that capability. And I would imagine that all the senior people within their departments are encouraging their employees to behave in such a way as to constantly improve. Again, I have seen a number of things in the government that kind of replicate what we've done in technology. I am in technology. And that is the central principle of how we behave. We are not perfect, will never be perfect. But our attempts to become more effective, more efficient at what we do can only be based on experiences we have. And unfortunately, some of those experiences are not good.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone. I know there are folks that are listening in. So I'll turn, I'll close the public comment, I guess, in the chambers and turn to those who are listening virtually.
If you'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. To comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And once you've heard that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands.
Thanks. This is Eva Crisanti. I'm listening to the comments and the whole thing with just a sense of awe and horror. I mean, the original incident is horrible enough. What's extra disturbing is hearing a bunch of nice white liberals come down and expound on how awful this situation is. But many of the people you heard, you know, rend their fabric and beat their chests about this had been approached as early as 2021 with many of the abuses that the San Rafael police were engaged in against unhoused Latino and black and white individuals in the city of San Rafael's police-run deadly homeless internment camp under a freeway. And every single one of those people turned their back. Mr. Bingham, Ms. Taub, et cetera. And now, because there's something that they can see and that they're embarrassed about, they're down here to make a fuss. But these abuses have been going on for decades. And when they were confronted with something they really could have done something about that would have impacted a much larger population that was much more in need and didn't have nice white employers who were willing to go to bat for them, they were absent. And so, you know, we have one problem, that is the police. But then we have another problem, which is, to put it as kindly as possible, nice white liberals and their allies who do things like, you know, ignore serious issues until they can get some benefit out of it, say by being on the Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Working Group. Reform isn't going to happen this way. It needs to be much more. It needs to be much more.
Thank you. This is Debbie Choisier. I am a white resident of Marin. And I guess I shouldn't be surprised by this, because police have been abusing people of color throughout the history of this country. And yet, it is 2023, and it is still surprising to me that it's possible for police officers to beat up my neighbors out in public for everyone to see and for there to likely be zero accountability for that. It's wrong, and there must be something that we can do to change this. If nothing else, we need to have oversight bodies in this county for every police department, for the sheriff, and start to hold the people with the power to do this to others accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
I see one more hand at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Hey there, this is Lori, and I also wasn't planning on speaking tonight, not really knowing that this was on here. But I wonder about all the other police officers. If one of my colleagues did something like this, and every one of us knows the truth, it doesn't matter what color your skin is, this is ridiculous. I mean, how can the other police officers work competently, knowing that so many people think that they're all the same, which they're not? But what is being done for them mentally and every other part that might be used to continue doing their jobs properly for residents of San Rafael? So this is not only us that this gets, it gets to the good police officers also, which are not easy to keep. And I don't know what to say about it, but I do agree with everybody else that we are not the ones that need to do something. The council and the people that have a lot of pull are the ones who should be doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Just one more hand at this time. We're ready for you.
Barbara Bogard. I live in Mill Valley, and I had no intention of speaking tonight, but listening to this, I have to say, I spend most of my time working with, in support of the Black community in Marin City, and we hear the same words that you've said, we've heard tonight, repeated over and over. You're right on script. When you continue to claim our hands are tied, your hands are not tied by unjust laws. To quote Dr. King, "There are just laws and there are unjust laws." I would be the first to advocate obeying just laws. One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. Any law that uplifts human personality is just. Any law that degrades human personality is unjust." Unquote. If you and your attorney are going to continue to hide behind the excuse that your hands are tied, we know you're the ones who've tied them. Please untie your own hands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else online?
I see one more hand. We may have already heard from this person, we shall see.
Okay.
So I see no further comment at this time.
Thank you. We will close the public comment and bring it back. There were some questions that were posed, and I think it would be helpful to have both the city attorney and the assistant city manager maybe speak to the process and some of the timing questions that came up. So I will turn to the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I do want to add a few comments based on some of the public comment that was made. If I created confusion on some points, I'd like to try to clarify. First off, I heard a suggestion that somehow my remarks about the law were suggesting that the community somehow is prohibited from communicating with its elected city council about this incident, about its feelings about policing in San Rafael, and all the other issues that have been discussed tonight. The community is encouraged to communicate with the city, with its elected officials about any and all topics of interest, in particular, the one that is the subject of policing this incident, et cetera. And I think that's what Christine will be speaking to a little bit more in terms of process that's been going on in that regard. And on that point, the suggestion made that council members can't speak either was not what I was suggesting in general. What I was advising was just regarding this particular personnel matter in the Fresno case that I referenced earlier, Fitzgerald v. City of Fresno, for those attorneys in the audience who would like to read it. The mayor commented on the specifics of an internal investigation and also commented on the fact that the officer in question had been terminated and related those ideas. And the federal court made clear that that was an invasion of the officer's privacy and overruled the city's demur, and that meant that the mayor's Twitter comment could be the subject of city liability. Therefore, my advice to the city council, please do not comment about this personnel matter for fear of exposing the city to other liabilities that it currently isn't exposed to, as long as everyone can follow this instruction. As far as everyone's feelings about the law and whether it should be this way, I've expressed my frustration with it. I know it's shared by those at the dais. And absolutely, you council members that I know are regularly in contact with Senator McGuire, with Assembly Member Connolly, who I know has expressed interest in this particular incident, absolutely are encouraged to express your feelings about the law, changes that you think should be made in the law, so that perhaps in the future, God willing, not in San Rafael, but if something like this happens in some other city, there will be more opportunity for transparency and disclosure about the details of all of this. But the only other thing I wanted to add before inviting Christine to make any remarks she has about the ongoing community meetings that you've been engaged in, is to respond to some confusion. I think Mr. Spolter got the process backwards. It's actually first an internal SCLELE appeal hearing that's a city procedure. The binding arbitration happens after that. If first, there's discipline imposed by the police chief, second, the employee decides to contest the discipline at a internal hearing to another city official. And then, if the discipline is upheld, then after that, the employee has the right to contest the discipline arbitration. And the discipline, if any, does not become final until after the decision at the SCLELE hearing. Finally, a question was asked about when a decision might be made. And my expectation would be that the chief should render his decision about what to do. And again, he has a lot of options, as I've stated, but I would expect that to be within a week.
Thank you.
Mayor Kate.
You know what? We've closed the public comment, so we're actually going to hear from the assistant city attorney, excuse me, city manager, but please email us if there are additional questions you want to answer. Okay.
Mayor Kate, is it okay if I take a moment to swap the interpreters?
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you.
And actually, I was going to give the email why she was doing that, but we'll just wait.
Thank you.
So maybe the assistant city manager could start with, if people have additional comments where they, she said, yeah, where we could send emails. I just was thinking about that thought to either, I don't know if it's the city clerk or city attorney, where people have questions.
City.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org.
So if people have input or questions, they should send it to that? And that will either be part of the public record, and any questions will be passed on appropriately?
Yes. And once again, that's city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and counsel. I think you wanted me to speak a little bit to the process and the community meetings we've been having and where that's going?
Yes, please.
Okay. So since the fall, we've had six community forums, some held in Spanish with English interpretation, some in English with Spanish interpretation, with really incredible participation from the community. We've, hundreds of people show up to these meetings to share their input and feedback about policing in San Rafael, what matters to them, what safety feels like and looks like in their neighborhoods. I'll mention again the website that Rob mentioned, cityofsanrefel.org, policing in San Rafael. And the feedback that we've heard through those community meetings is reflected on that website. So we've been really trying to take this time to really think thoroughly through what is accountability and transparency and safety look and feel like in policing in San Rafael. So Chief Spiller, myself, members of the council, and Francine Tornor, who is a police accountability and community engagement expert who's also affiliated with Nicole, we've been working together to develop transparency and accountability layer here in the city of San Rafael. And that is that program, and the recommendations for that are going to be coming forward to the city council for discussion and consideration and what exactly that form and shape will look like is not fully baked yet, but because we're still talking to the community and getting input from the community before we bring that forward to you. So I think that's a high-level summary, but I'm happy to answer any other questions if that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I appreciate you mentioning the webpage. I think there's a place where people can also sign up to receive any updates as more information or community meetings if their planned are posted. Okay. So that closes that item of the calendar, and I appreciate everyone who's spoken this evening. I'll give you a moment, unless you want to stay for our consent agenda, the reusable foodware ordinance, that would be lovely, but otherwise, I'll give you a moment to leave the chambers before we move to the consent agenda. Okay, so we'll move to the consent calendar. There are any items to be held from the consent calendar for comment? Not seeing any items. I'll open the public comment on our consent agenda this evening. We have the minutes, we have the paramedic tax rate. We have quite a few items, the proclamations that I mentioned, so A through H. And I will open public comment on the consent agenda right now. Anyone in the chambers would like to comment? Sure, come on down.
Looking at the proclamations.
Okay.
I can't help but notice National Police Week and the wording of the proclamation and your signature. I can't but hope that it was signed a long time ago, but even if still, you got to know the wording is problematic. This is copaganda to a T. We are taking time to recognize police officers. Sure, great, no problem with that. But we also need to recognize that more police officers take their own lives than die by the hands of any suspects. That is significant, significant. So let's talk about the mental health aspect of police officers. One in five people suffer from mental illness. How many cops are walking around suffering from mental illness with a gun? Here we are talking about how we can't talk about a major incident where the police beat somebody nearly to death. And then we're going to make a proclamation honoring the police officers, who in California, nine officers last year have killed themselves, 10 possibly. But 146 Californians were murdered by police officers last year as well. So we have to maybe tell the complete picture. When we're honoring police officers at the same time investigating them, it's kind of problematic, and I would urge you to pull this item, because together with what we just heard from you and what we just heard from everybody else and seeing police officers standing behind me, this is not meant for anything but virtue signaling and terror. It's the continual of terror from police officers. These guys walk around with guns, they're trusted to just enforce the law somewhat subjectively. And when they don't, hands are tied. So they get to sit in the back of the room with their feet all comfortable, knowing that there's no, there's no, I don't want to call it justice, I don't want to call it accountability, but there's nothing, hands are tied. So police officers get to just do what they want.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on the consent agenda?
Hello again, Heidi Merchant. I want to speak toward the same issue that the last speaker spoke to, the tone deafness of having a proclamation tonight for National Police Week in conjunction with the investigation into the police department. It's devastating. The proclamation puts in writing, at the same time we're talking about misconduct and unlawful use of force, a statement that the main job of the police department is safeguarding the rights and freedom of those residing and visiting San Rafael. That is their duty to serve the people, protecting their lives and their bodies against violence. At the same time, we're talking about what happened to Mateo's body, protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. I don't know where the wording came from. It's offensive to me. I think it's offensive to everyone who loves Mateo, who was in the room tonight. Unfortunately, what we see now is that we may need to be protected against police officers themselves. We need to see justice to build trust. We need to see everyone being treated with dignity and respect. We need to see the department and its members serving with integrity and holding themselves and each other accountable to build trust. We need culture change, as was very apparent on the body cams, people were laughing and in community together after a beating of one of our residents and neighbors. We need culture change and an authentic relationship with the community. This national proclamation says nothing about building trust between community and the police. Until we know justice, we will not know peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda in the chambers? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online who would like to? We're receiving comment right now on the consent agenda.
If you'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. To comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And once you've heard that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see one hand at this time.
Thank you. This is Eva Crisanti. I noticed that multiple members of the county's Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Working Group have appeared to speak during public comment, but have not identified themselves as such. When the first speaker talked about virtue signaling, I think that's a great term to describe much of what I have seen go on, go on, from the few videos that the county actually made available to me via CPRA. We know that civilian oversight of law enforcement doesn't work. I mean, it would be great if it did, but we have way too much data. It doesn't work. But what you're seeing right now, I think what you're seeing with this group of people from the working group coming to speak on this topic, what you're seeing is an attempt at reputation laundering, because they really soiled the bed with their mishandling of the tasks they were handed as a working group. And so, you know, one of the things they want is in excess of $600,000 for a, you know, an investigator and two assistants, two admins, to facilitate this very paltry civilian oversight that they're going to do. I mean, the levels of grift, not just within police departments, but within the saviors who come in and say, you know, very much like, you know, the emperor's new clothes, we will be spinning the finest silk. And, you know, here we are to show you our wonderful process, but when you actually get to see it, when you run the CPRA and see what they're doing, it's really just good money after bad. So please pay attention to what is happening. Please have people identify themselves when they're part of a county working group. Thank you. Please have people identify themselves when they're part of a county working group. Thank you.
I see no other hands. Just give another couple of seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And unless there's further comments or an item to be pulled, there would be a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Joren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. Thank you. We are at the first item of our public hearing this evening, and it's a use permit revocation for nightclub at 84842 Fourth Street. And I will ask the city attorney to start this item once we get. Are you going to need slides? Should we? Okay, I just know, because I know sometimes there's a little transition time, so we're all set. Welcome, Leslie. But let me turn to the city attorney.
Thank you again, Mayor Kate. And I'm going to explain why you are about to see a different attorney sitting in this seat. And that's Eli, who is present in the chambers, kind enough to be present tonight. The Court of Appeal came out with a case called Nightlife Partners. Boy, it's probably been almost 20 years now, Beverly Hills case, that involved something similar to the type of proceeding that's occurring here tonight, which is a quasi-judicatory proceeding when the city council sits as a judicial body, if you will, hearing evidence, applying the law and making a decision. That's what you'll be called upon to do tonight. Eli can tell you more about it, and he'll be here to answer any questions that you have. The reason that your city attorney won't be giving you advice, as he typically does, is because the Nightlife Partners case instructed that there can be a potential conflict that arises if the city attorney's office is working on both sides of the matter, advising staff, which is Leslie here tonight, who is prosecuting the use permit revocation, if you will. And then on the other side, advising the, in this case, four-headed judge, the city council that will be deciding the matter. And so in an abundance of caution and wanting to make sure that we follow the dictates of the Nightlife Partners case, Genevieve and I have both bowed out of this thing and have other attorneys involved. So Eli will be in my role. I've got the seat warm for him by now. And then I think it's Connor? Connor will be assisting staff as needed. But it's Leslie's presentation. But I just, before I left my seat and you had Eli jump into it, I wanted to explain why.
Thank you. Welcome, Eli. Is that your first or last name? Just so we can address you appropriately.
It's Eli Fleischman, the last name Fleischman.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Fleischman. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Leslie, for being here. And I will turn it over to you.
Great.
I'm not sure who Connor is. I don't know where that person is.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the council, as well as members of the public. I'm Leslie Mendez, Planning Manager, as well as the presenter of tonight's appeal, Appeal of the Planning Commission Decision to revoke Use Permit 05-01, the use permit for George's nightclub at 842 Fourth Street. Joining me this evening in the chambers are Chief Spiller from the Police Department, as well as Chief Building Official, Don Jepson. Joining me virtually are Ana Santiago, Senior Code Enforcement Supervisor, as well as Connor McLean, who is our Consulting Attorney.
Hi, I don't know if you all can hear me, but I can't turn my video on. It says that the host stopped my video. I don't know if the host needs to change that.
Thank you. We will look into that.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Connor McLean.
Oh yeah, sorry, Connor. I'm the attorney for planning staff for Leslie.
Is it his phone number or his name listed?
I found him.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That's great.
Sorry for the interruption, Leslie. Sorry.
Great. So George's nightclub was first granted approval for live entertainment in 1984. After that use permit expired, a new owner purchased the property, applied and received use permit approval for Live Entertainment, a cocktail lounge in conjunction with a supper club full-service restaurant. The Use Permit 05-01, which is the subject of tonight's hearing, included several conditions of approval to monitor operations, site management and security, business license maintenance, hours of operation, and operation as a bona fide eating place, otherwise known as a full-service restaurant. The permit was also approved upon finding that the use, together with the conditions of approval, would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the city. Evolution nightclub, doing business as George's nightclub, took over operations in 2013. Although shuttered during the early stages of the COVID pandemic, they reopened a little more than two years ago in April of 21. Since the business reopened, there has been an increased frequency of emergency calls related to activities at the nightclub. In July 21, following a shooting involving people associated with the performance at the club, the city assigned a code enforcement, excuse me, officer to conduct inspections to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions as established as part of the use permit. In a letter dated September 8 of 2021, numerous violations were noted, detailed, and conveyed to Esli Figueroa, the nightclub operator, with a request to correct and to comply. As little to no movement was made to come into compliance with permits' conditions and as calls to the police regarding the business operations continued to be ongoing, staff took the step of bringing the use permit up for revocation hearing in front of the Planning Commission on March 28, 2023. Based on documentation presented in the Planning Commission packet and evidence presented by staff and the business owner at the hearing, the Planning Commission found that the business was both operating in noncompliance with use permit conditions and that it represented a public nuisance. Either finding on its own sufficient to revoke the use permit, the commission unanimously voted to revoke Use Permit 05-01. On April 5, 2023, Esli Figueroa, the business owner and now appellant, filed a timely appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. The appeal letter, which can be found in Attachment 2 of the staff report, lists a number of allegations, including inadequate interpretation services at the Planning Commission meeting, inadequate review of materials by the Planning Commissioners, discrepancies in information presented, and wrongful accusations by and bias on the part of city staff in our interactions and communications with and regarding the nightclub. The staff report included in your packet tonight provides a detailed description of each appeal point, as well as staff's response to each. In summary, however, the appellant has provided no evidence to support any of the appeal points she made or to undermine the preponderance of evidence compiled by staff and presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's decision to revoke the nightclub was based on the entirety of the evidence provided and not on a single incident or statement. Staff's decision to bring the matter to hearing and Planning Commission's decision to revoke the permit were not taken lightly. The city encourages commercial activity to bring vibrancy and diversity of art and entertainment to the downtown, which in turn to the city and the region as a whole. The business, however, has continued to operate in noncompliance with the use permit even after numerous notifications and inspections by city staff. And unfortunately for all, the noncompliance has resulted in a disproportionate number of service calls to the police to respond to incidents of over-intoxication, theft, and violence, all of which put a strain on police resources, requiring diversion from other emergency services and patrol operations. It was the number and severity of the incidents, ongoing impacts to patrons, passersbyers in the surrounding neighborhood, and the club's failure to show correction and improvement that led the Planning Commission to find that the club was in noncompliance of the use permit condition, as well as representing public nuisance, endangering the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and thereby both voted to revoke the use permit. As the appeal provides no evidence to undermine this decision, staff recommends the council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission action. And thank you. That's my presentation. And all of staff are here to answer questions, but I do think the appellant will be speaking next.
Okay, just for clarity, thank Ms. Mendez. So Mr. Fleischman, so we have, if we have questions, do we wait till after the appellant has spoken?
If you had some clarified questions about the specific, what you just said, you could.
If you had some brief questions, I would consider you can ask those, but you might want to wait and give the appellate maybe a chance to address those issues and then ask those as well. But if you had some questions, you can ask them.
Okay, I think we will hold our questions. Just appreciate that. So Ms. Figueroa, it looks like you're joining us virtually. Welcome. And the floor, the virtual floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Esli. I'm a member of George's nightclub, actually is Evolution nightclub restaurant. I decided not to attend in person to minimize any damage to me in case I have any negative answer tonight. So I will have somebody to talk from me, to know how interpreted. So he's going to start right now. His name is Frank.
Hello, my name is Frank. I'm her son. I'd just like to clarify, she just said, I decided not to attend in person to minimize any damage in the case that I receive a negative response today. So I'm just going to be translating on a statement that she wrote. So I would like to bring to clarity to some discussion points that were brought up at the previous hearing. So first, I'd like to address the shooting that was, I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, I'd like to address the shooting that took place. At the previous meeting, the City of San Rafael Police Department stated that we were not on the radar until the shooting took place. We feel that we've been personally targeted ever since the shooting took place, but we'd like to argue and we had not, we didn't have a proper voice in the previous hearing to say that the shooting was an isolated incident that occurred a couple garages down. However, the city and a lot of the public tended to blame George's for the shooting that took place blocks down. We don't blame the garage, nor do we blame Soul Food for bringing people from across county lines. But we blame, I think the city was looking for someone to blame in this case, and everyone just pointed to George's. Again, so we'd just like to say the shooting was an isolated incident, and it does not pose any ongoing threat to public safety. Second was on the revocation hearing, the city said that you guys sent undercover agents and noted that the city, that our establishment did not have the four security guards which are required per the permit. But I'd like to point out that I've always had four security guards as required by the permit employed, and they all are valid security guards with the security cards, security C-A-R-D-S, it sounds similar, but security cards required to be security guards. And lastly, there was an issue at the last hearing regarding the food and business license. I believe a lot of the members were not able to hear correctly that I had both valid food and business licenses. And at the last hearing, the translator wasn't able to communicate that effectively. So I'd like to address that these issues were not properly addressed at the last hearing. And I'd just like to say that it would be extremely sad if Evolution were to close, if San Rafael were to close the business stores on George's. We've been operating for over 13 years now. And George's itself has an old, is a classic in downtown San Rafael. There's not many other venues like us here, and it's kind of hard to operate. And we, obviously being a nightclub, there will, there will be incidents. But we hope that, you know, the city will be kind and help us address the issues on the permit. Again, as I've mentioned today, many of the issues on the permit hearing last time were not properly addressed, and we have corrected or rectified some of them. And some of them were actually never at issue. So I have thrown many successful events in the past, and I've catered to a variety of backgrounds in the city as well. And these events have ranged from plays, meetings, weddings, live bands, and et cetera. And I wish to, and I wish to continue to continue to do more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments at this time? Yes, okay. So we're looking at both cameras, because actually the closed captioning is covering. So if we're doing this, that's why, because we actually can see you here, Ms. Figueroa. Okay. So coming back for any questions? And if you have clarified, can the questions also be of the appellant? I mean, the appellant?
Yes, you can ask questions of either party, and you may do so.
Okay, thank you so much. So we will start with any questions, Vice Mayor? No? Okay, Councilmember Bushy? Yes?
For Mr. Fleischman.
Fleischman, yes.
Could you walk us through just a quick summary of what is the standard for upholding or denying this appeal? What findings do we need to make?
Well, your, your job here for the appeal is, hold on, let me just find it, is and you're hearing this appeal de novo. So you're hearing all this evidence for, and getting to take all the evidence and make these determinations on what, on all the issues that are presented to you. Give me one minute. I had that portion set up on my phone, but I've moved it. So your job is to hear and decide whether there are reasonable grounds for revocation or modification of the use permit. That's what the Planning Commission reviewed, and that was the determination for them. So I'd encourage you to hear both sides, as you've just heard the presentations, and consider whether or not there are reasonable grounds for such revocation as what's being proposed here, or whether you determine that there's a different solution that you find appropriate.
Okay, so reasonable grounds?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I heard during testimony about undercover city officials conducting inspection. I wanted to understand a little bit more what was observed. I heard security guards numbering four was not observed. What were some of the other findings that the undercover official was able to see? I'm seeing Ana Santiago.
Yeah, I'll hit Ana Santiago, who did the undercover site visit. And it's my understanding that the statements about not having sufficient security guards and identified were from police and not from her visit, that she can confirm that.
Can you hear that? Ana, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers. I was there purely to observe their operations and were they needing their use permit. What I meant by that is that I made sure to walk and make sure that they have not a rear exit, but a side exit, and to make sure that that was clear. And they had a DJ first, and then they had a band. They did keep that little, that hallway clear. I went to go and check the kitchen. When I walked into the kitchen, I was turned away rather rapidly. But in my statement, I said that I didn't see anything cooked. I did order a drink because I was also checking to see if they were overflowing the alcohol. And I ordered the chicken wings, which was the only item that was available that night.
Thank you for your testimony. And I had one follow-up question. With respect to calls for service, can we elaborate on the number and type of calls? And my question is And my question is scoped beyond the, outside of the shooting incident.
Yes, so there have been close to 30 calls that have been documented in the staff report for planning commission that was an attachment to your staff report. And they run the range of over and over-service drunk, drunk people out on the sidewalk, fights, thefts, calls for thefts, one DUI, quite a bit of different fight interventions. And so the shooting incident was just one of the 27 that were documented and presented in the staff report. There were other calls for service, but there were allegations that the police actually didn't witness, that we didn't include in the staff report. So those that were included, the 27 included, were actual incidents with follow-up action as opposed to, so there are more calls that the police have had to respond to. Does that answer your question?
What I'm hearing is that there's a, there's a correlation to over-service with many of the calls for services, is what I'm understanding.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question for Ms. Figaro. I, assuming that you also were able to look at the staff report. And I don't know, Frank, you can always stop me if you want to translate for Ms. Figaro. But my question is specifically about appeal points four and five, which are having to vote through with food. And there's both a conditional use permit that the city that we're talking about tonight, that is being suggested it be revoked. And then there's also the ABC, which is the licensing agency for serving alcohol. Both of these require a certain type of food, and actually, it's very specific what type of food. And I know you mentioned, or Frank was saying, that you have, you have a license, although what we have found in looking at this is that the type of license you have, that you receive from the county, actually is not the appropriate type of license to be serving the type of food that is required by the CUP and ABC. And you've been in operation for 13 years, and so that license isn't appropriate. Could you speak to that? That, to me, is incredibly concerning, and that's, those are both objective regulations and standards.
Yeah, give me one second to translate. Yeah, so I just translated to Esli, my mom, and she said that, to her knowledge, she has all the appropriate business and licenses, and she is compliant with ABC licensing requirements. So again, if it's appropriate to file, I don't know if this is appropriate in this forum, but like a supplemental brief that we could provide where we show that?
Thank you. Well, we can ask the lawyer about that. And actually, when you look at this, it's, what we're being told is that it's actually not the appropriate type of license, and that there is incompatibility there. So I will leave that as it is. I just have one other question for Mr. Bushman. So if the, this is just again going off of Councilmember Bush's questions. If the appeal is granted, what would happen? If the appeal is denied, what would happen? And then what would happen to any other, if it is denied, to anyone else who comes along and would want to do a business in this area? Could you answer those three questions?
Okay, so if the appeal is denied?
Granted, let's start with the granted.
The appeal is granted, then the use permit would, well, we would ask you to direct staff to bring back a resolution to explain granting the, granting the appeal. And then the use permit, and I might defer, defer to Leslie to correct me if I'm wrong, would, would continue, and they would be able to continue to operate.
Okay.
If the appeal is denied, then when you adopt the resolution that has been drafted, then the use, the use would not be allowed to be, or this use permit would no longer be operational. As to the, what can be done at the property going forward, I would actually defer to Leslie again on that subject. And then any other, and was the third question, any other interim?
Well, I think the question was if someone else came along with the conditional use permit, could it be changed for someone else that might come along in the same issue? Or came, also wanting to do possibly a similar type of venue, excuse me, business in that venue? And what would happen then? Would the whole thing, would we start from scratch? Is I guess what I'm asking. I'm not saying it very well. But would we start from scratch if it is denied? And then what happens next for this space?
Right, so if the, if the appeal is denied and the planning commission action is upheld, the use permit would be revoked, and I believe it is a year before anyone could come back and apply for a similar use permit, which would essentially be for the nightclub and the live entertainment, the live entertainment in the cocktail lounge. So anyone can come in in the meantime and open a restaurant with alcohol service, which is allowed by right in the downtown precise plan zoning district that it's located in. So what would be not there would be the live entertainment and alcohol, like the bar kind of nightclub service that would need a year hiatus before someone could reapply for that.
And in, thank you, and would the city also have the opportunity to revise the use permit? It was originally granted, I think you said in 84, and then there was a remodel in the early 2000s. And so a lot of time has passed in those years. Could that use permit be put to the side or null and void, and we would start all over about what we would allow there using the downtown precise plan as guide?
Or? So if you were to revoke the use permit, it would be a de novo use permit and whatever conditions? If, if you, I should say, if you denied the appeal and upheld the planning commission's decision, if you chose to grant the appeal, you could modify the existing, ask staff to come back with a different resolution with modifications to the existing use permit. So there's options to modify it either way.
Yeah, no, I understand, because there's both, we're talking about the current operation, is what this, what we're talking about right now, is your current operation. And then depending on the action that the council takes, there might be, we might want to look at that as a suitability as a site or as a venue. As I understand it, there are some site constraints with a side door. There's no back door, which is not a part of this conditional use permit. So which is why we're not, I'm not bringing that up deeply. But if the appeal is denied, I think the council and the city, probably our building official, the fire department, would want to look at the suitability of this site and have it match the suitability of what business goes in there.
For sure.
And that could be done.
For sure. So after a period, once this, if this were to be revoked, and there were to a year pass, a new, the current situation in the building permit that approved this venue from a building point of view and the access is something that wouldn't be approved today. And so once a year has passed and then inactivity, any new use would be subject to current codes, both in terms of fire and building for safe access.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Bushy, go ahead.
Just a quick appellate question. A year of inactivity? So this property must sit vacant for a year?
No, it doesn't need to sit vacant for a year, but it cannot have anyone reapply for a nightclub or bar slash lounge or live entertainment.
So just like, so it could be a restaurant?
Correct.
Or a library, or it could be anything.
Correct.
Not.
Right.
Not a live.
It doesn't have to sit vacant.
Anything that is permissible under the zoning district in the downtown precise plans.
Okay, and could this applicant seek?
She could.
Leslie, could I step in for a second?
Yes, please.
So when Leslie is talking about a conditional use permit, could it be applied for a new within a year? That's because the San Rafael municipal code says that when a use, a conditional use permit is revoked, a new conditional use permit cannot be applied for in the same site within one year of the revocation. So, and to be clear, revoking this use permit would not shut down the business. It would just stop the particular uses permitted by the conditional use permit. Uses allowed, and the underlying zoning would still be allowed. The underlying zoning allows for restaurants, allows for alcohol sales at restaurants. It just doesn't allow for nightclub uses. In one year, if this were to be, if the conditional use permit were to be revoked, anyone, Ms. Figaro, or a different applicant in having the space at the time could apply for a conditional use permit of any type, including nightlife use, including whatever. And the city could impose whatever conditions it found appropriate at that time, as of course legal at that time.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you, Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
No, I actually had a similar question to see if she could actually reapply.
Was it answered in the way, okay?
Yeah, it was.
Additional questions? Yes, Councilmember Hill.
Has the city historically revoked conditional permits like this in the past? How often does this happen?
This happens really infrequently in this city and in most cities. Generally, cities try to work with business owners to get a permit into compliance or the operations of the business into compliance. So this is rare.
So I think this is implied in the staff report, but I guess for the sake of asking for your testimony, do you believe that there's a fact pattern of opportunity to comply and a pattern of not making attempt to comply substantially?
I'm sorry, you asking if I feel that the business operator has attempted to comply?
That there were, there was adequate opportunity to comply, and that there was not substantive compliance.
I do think there was adequate opportunity to comply. There has been documented site visits, letters, additional visits. When police respond to calls, that there, there was notice that things weren't in compliance. There was lists of what needed to happen to comply, and it didn't move forward. And aside from the use permit conditions, many of which were never rectified, and some used to have a valid business license and that expired over a year ago. I think what is a little bit alarming is the ongoing calls for service to the police, and that hasn't been reduced in any way. And that is, I feel what, that is, staff feels is what is detrimental to the welfare of the community and why we brought this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any further questions right now from the council. I'll open it up to public comment.
Mayor Kate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I please swap out the interpreters?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one moment.
So once the interpreter?
Thank you.
Okay, interpreter's been swapped out. So public comment, if anyone in the chambers would like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone, anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple hands.
Thanks. This is Eva Crisanti. This is an interesting topic. I was just looking through archives over the weekend, and I noticed a similar issue, much less serious, in Marin City in the late 1950s. And one of the concerns brought forward by the district attorney at that time was that there were no taverns or nightclubs in Marin City. And so complaints about people drinking in the street were forwarded to law enforcement and the district attorney, and thus the district attorney, when really it, people needed a place to go to have a drink, or to hear music, or they needed a recreation center. So if you punish this nightclub, what, what other problems would come down the line? Something you should consider. I know that, if I understand this correctly, if I, am I understanding this shooting correctly? There was a 62-year-old unhoused person who was injured in this. And I think it's worth pointing out, because he seems to be forgotten in this, how irresponsible the city was in his care once he was released from hospital. It's my understanding that he was released from the hospital into that wretched, deadly, and abusive internment camp under a freeway that had no bathrooms and running water, that was established by Mayor Kate Collin, supervisor, then Supervisor Connolly, and State Senator Mike McGuire. And when I saw him there, I thought he was going to die. It was terrifying. He was swaddled in blankets and in a chair. I guess he couldn't, you know, be in a tent. They, they wouldn't give him a tent. I didn't understand what the problem was. I saw him near the beginning of the year, and outside of that horrible SSA, he was doing much better, but please don't forget him.
There is one more hand at this time?
Hi, good evening. This is Barry Toronto. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Toronto, go ahead.
Yes, I am disturbed at both sides of how this has gone down. I am overlaying this on the standards on how the Entertainment Commission in San Francisco deals with situations like this, because Marin doesn't really have a lot of nightclubs or nighttime venues. I have to go to the city for my entertainment and my dancing opportunities. And so I think what disturbs me the most is, is the calls for service. Usually, related to venues like this, it involves sound complaints. So one thing you have to look at, if there are not any, or maybe even only one sound complaint, then you have to look at how they can rectify the other problems. So, so what disturbs me the most is the owner should have gotten the, people who go to the venue to come and speak out and defend the venue. I'm a little disturbed, someone who hasn't gone there in ages because the security guards are rather intimidating and uniformed. Venues in San Francisco have guards with guard cards and trained, but they don't have uniforms. They have things that say they're security, but they're not dressed up like police, and that intimidated me. So I didn't go anymore. So, so the thing is, is this, is I think you have to look at maybe trying to work with the owner to modify the conditions and give them like two or three months to rectify the conditions, including, including the problems that cause the calls for service. Not to be tongue-in-cheek, but I'd rather please focus on catalytic converter thefts than deal with calls for service at a nightclub. But please look.
I see no other hands at this time. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. There weren't any questions that came up from the public comment, but are there additional questions that the council has prior to making comments? I don't see any additional questions, so I will call in the Vice Mayor to offer your comments on this item.
Well, this is, this is very complicated, because we love our small businesses, you know? And this is a very hard situation for us to be put in this position, because my first impression is that I want to keep all our small businesses, and I want to support them. However, it seems that this is bringing, you know, too many safety calls to the city. And, and one thing that we want to make sure is that it is enjoyable for everybody. So, yeah, it's, and so I think I'm kind of like divided. divided. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Um, I just want to, um, put a little bit of context to this, um, based on my long tenure. Um, I think we, we may have, um, uh, underemphasized how rare this is. Um, it is, in my time on the Planning Commission and here, which tallies to many years, um, I only remember one or two other revocations. This is an extremely unusual situation that our staff has meticulously gone through um, and exhausted every possibility of keeping this business, um, in i- i- intact and, um, finding a way to, um, keep it here. Um, the fact that, um, they have brought this forward with this long, um, path, uh, pattern of non-compliance and particularly the role of, um, law enforcement shows that, uh, to me that, um, strenuous efforts have been made to avoid this outcome. Um, but nevertheless, um, based on the testimony and the evidence that, um, we've seen tonight, I would support denying the appeal and revoking the, um, the conditional use permit. I would also, of course, ask that our economic development team, um, work with the owners of the property to, um, find a, um, a permissible use, um, for the property as soon as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I concur with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bushy in their analysis. My first impression is to try in every way to support our small businesses. I, based on testimony this evening and in the testimony provided during the Planning Commission, I think that staff has afforded multiple opportunities to come into compliance. Um, I take the testimony of Leslie Mendez that there is, um, there was every way worked to try to make this, um, make compliance possible. And it, it seemed that there was a disregard for that opportunity. Um, so this is very tough. I do not like that we have to consider it this way. I want the, uh, business owner to be able to be, uh, have a thriving business in San Rafael. And I hope that that opportunity could be considered, uh, in the future, um, on the other side of, of, uh, of the action tonight. So I, I plan to, um, uphold the, uh, decision of the Planning Commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and thank you for the thoughtful questions. Thank you, Leslie, for the incredible staff, staff report and all the work. Um, the business owner was contacted with, uh, the concerns in September of twenty twenty-one. We've only, we've almost had two years. And so I'm saddened that in those two years, there are these health and safety obligations that have not been met. And these are objective standards. These are not subjective standards that the city has. These are ones that have to do with health and safety codes. I'd mentioned in my questioning regard regarding the food licensing. That is not the correct license to serve food that is required with an ABC license as well as our conditional use permit. Um, the calls for service to the first responders, those are all objective datas. And it's very clear to us, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, that this type of business can't operate in a safe and healthy way for our community, for the patrons, and really for, for anyone who uh, wants to frequent that, um, frequent the venue. This is an appeal. I did go before the Planning Commission. I know they heard similar information. Um, and then we heard even more information and they were unanimous in their decision. So it's not just this body, but there is another decision-making body that, uh, has come to the same conclusion that it is unfortunate that the way that the, the club, the nightclub is currently being operated does not conform to the health and safety standards that we have here in the city of San Rafael. I concur with my colleagues that providing technical support or business support to Mrs. Figaro would be, Miss Figaro would be incredible. Uh, so she, it doesn't have to stay empty, um, and helping her to have, if she so chooses, a compliant business um, that really is supported by the business community and the greater community and that we can all be proud of. So, um, appreciate the supporting, uh, attorneys who showed up, appreciate the staff. Uh, this is a, a difficult situation, but I, I have clarity and, um, around, from what I have heard from both the staff, from the testimony and the information in front of us. So with that, um, I would accept a formal, um, motion.
A move that we adopt the resolution denying the appeal and affirming Planning Commission March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three decision to revoke the use permit.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
A second.
Oh, sorry, second.
I'll second the motion.
Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Joren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Eli. Thank you, Connor. The next item is the reusable foodware ordinance. We will give a moment for folks to change seats. Okay, so this is an introduction of an ordinance at the city council. If, and San Rafael amending our use code and, um, well, we're going to have to talk about reusable foodware ordinance. I'm just going to say that because it's really long ordinance. Um, and I see that Walter Gonzalez and Courtney Bitoff has joined us, so I will turn it over to you two. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Kate and council. Um, as you see, Corey next to me and Anna Olivia, Oliva are here today as well as Greg Piri and Dan Armanino from the county virtually to answer any questions. Sorry, let me just pull up our slideshow.
I think Brandon can help too. There's something always a little tricky. Oh, no, you got it. You got it. Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Um, so the, the reusable foodware ordinance aims to reduce contaminants in the waste stream by reducing plastics that are going to be, um, distributed by our food, uh, producing businesses, uh, in addition to educating residents, um, in businesses on proper composting. So if adopted, the ordinance would repeal and replace chapter ten point ninety-two, which prohibits the use of polystyrene foam disposable food packaging with a new chapter, still ten point ninety-two, that would regulate the foodware for retail food vendors. The reusable food ordinance is based on the County of Marin's model ordinance that's based on the following hierarchy. Reusable foodware is best, compostable and aluminum, you, foodware is compliant and plastics, plastic lined, including bi- bioplastics are not. The main components of the ordinance, uh, would require food vendors like restaurants, cafes and grocery stores to use compostable, washable foodware for dine-in, provide compostable foodware for takeout. It would also require that we implement a twenty-five cent cup itemized charge for disposable cups and the businesses would keep those twenty-five cents. And also it would require foodware accessories like straws, utensils to be provided only upon request. A major concern for businesses is the lack of compliant foodware that performs as well co- compared to their uh, plastic counterpart. So the county did create an exemption list that lists foodware that currently compostable alternatives are not viable or, uh, available yet. And the county will continue to update this list yearly. And these are some examples. So we have our fruit, a cup, a coffee cup, um, a rotisserie chicken container, soups, um, that we usually see in a lot of our minority businesses, sushi tray and also our boba, uh, cups. So any cup would be, uh, currently it would be exempt. So what's the, why should we pass the ordinance? Well, first, um, it would reduce plastic in our city in the waterways. Uh, we'd also see a reduction in, um, PFAS in food, uh, which is a chemical that is used to make plastic foodware that has been found to have health issues. The ordinance also aligns with our council's policy focus on, uh, zero waste and our zero waste goals. Another big benefit to passing the ordinance at this po- at this moment is that the county would enforce this ordinance on behalf of the city and waive the initial thirty-three thousand dollar enforcement fee that we would have to, um, the city would have to pay if we don't adopt it at this moment or introduce it. And importantly, the ordinance aligns with SB thirteen eighty-three outreach and compliance. So what are the cost impacts for businesses? So we find that for dine-in, there's long-term cost savings when transitioning for reusable foodware for businesses. Now for takeout, it does vary, uh, costs can vary. Uh, in some instances, it can be, uh, cheaper. In other instances, fifty, up to fifty percent more, depending on the product. We found that utensils and straws have a higher cost impact. But since the ordinance will require businesses to only be able to provide these based on request, we, we assume that there should be a reduction in the use. Uh, a survey by the city in two thousand and sixteen found that most residents don't even use the reusable, uh, the single-use foodware provided to them when ordering takeout as they prefer to be asked if they need it or not. And this is an example of a case study for a business that transitioned from serving everything in single-use foodware to reusable foodware. Uh, the upfront investment tends to be fairly low. This business spent around forty-two ninety-nine dollars and saw an annual net saving cost of thirty-three thousand dollars, um, as they continued to reuse this foodware. And as well as it did lead to a reduction in waste. So engagement. So, uh, while the county worked on creating the ordinance, uh, they did have a variety of engagements to inform the process. So they had over twenty-plus, uh, meetings with stakeholders. It included residents, businesses, restaurant owners, chambers of commerce, disability advocates and other stakeholders. Um, there was also a bilingual resident survey with three hundred and thirty responses that found that ninety-one percent of those respondents um, agreed with the idea of requiring a foodware that is either compostable or reusable. And there's also a wide, a seventy-nine percent support for a county-wide cup charge. The business responds, the businesses were also surveyed, um, and over fifty percent supported the twenty-five cent cup charge as well. And sixty-eight didn't, did believe that it wouldn't be as difficult to switch to reusable containers for dine-in. The city of San Rafael also did its own engagement around the ordinance, which mostly occurred in late two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we did fifty bilingual impersonality views with food vendors in downtown San Rafael, Terlinda and the canal. Uh, we also sent out bilingual mailers requesting feedback from all registered food vendors in the city. And we also provided this feedback to the county as they continue to develop and refine the ordinance. In two thousand and twenty-three, we sent out our public hearing notice. We also sent out a mailer to all registered businesses, uh, that are food vendors, uh, that the, uh, the ordinance was being introduced today. As well as met with various Marin and Bay Area jurisdictions, uh, to s- talk about how we can collaborate with the ordinance and also learn from other jurisdictions that have passed a similar ordinance and how that's been going for them. So one of the benefits, as I mentioned earlier, of the ordinance pass, uh, of passing the ordinance is the County of Marin's Health, um, Environmental Health Services Division would enforce it via its health inspection program. Um, soft enforcement would begin in November tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which means that the county will prioritize educating our businesses before going in inciting or taking other enforcement actions. The county has, uh, been vocal that they're committed to helping us make sure that our businesses comply before we go in and find them. Uh, and to get businesses to comply, the county does have, uh, two programs, uh, to help. So they do offer bilingual technical assistance, which helps the businesses understand the ordinance, identify what foodware is compliant. They can provide outreach materials and help the businesses apply for grants. The county grant is up to five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and it can be used for reusable foodware, to purchase reusable foodware, uh, to purchase compostable foodware or, uh, install a dishwasher if needed. As well as there are other, uh, uh, as I mentioned earlier, there are other jurisdictions that have, um, passed a similar ordinance. Um, some of them in the east, in the east coast, in the east coast, sorry, in the east bay. And they also have developed tools like this, uh, tool, rethink disposable, which helps a business calculate what, uh, their savings would be if they would transition. So, so, and a huge benefit of this ordinance is that how it aligns to SB thirteen eighty-three with outreach and compliance. As well as it also requires front and back of the house three-stream collection containers, which is required under SB thirteen eighty-three. We'd also, the county would also help the vendors figure, um, educate vendors on what's compostable and it would just reduce contaminants on their compost streams overall. We'd also align with other Marin jurisdictions that are considering or have passed the ordinance already. It would also help standardize waste management across the county as well as reduce waste. This is just a short timeline of our, the city and counties' efforts to introduce this ordinance, starting with, uh, the, a survey I mentioned earlier, uh, in two thousand and sixteen to the enforcement time of the ordinance, which would be November two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Excellent presentation. I'm sure there'll be some questions. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. What a great presentation. Uh, it's, uh, it's very clear. Uh, thank you. And I appreciate the county being here as well. So I know one of the big components is, um, the education to, um, our merchants, but also like to the people that actually, the consumer. Um, can, I don't know if, um, a- and I, my understanding is that the, that education is going to be done through the county. Um, yeah, that's my question.
Yes, the education would be done through the county and we will be helping, uh, wherever we can, specifically helping with bilingual outreach.
Okay. So, um, so yeah, I guess my comment would be, and I know we're going to do comments, but just making sure that, um, you know, out of the three hundred and twenty-two businesses, some of them might not be like, um, English might not be their first language and just to make sure that they, you know, that the, the education is provided in different languages and also keeping in mind different cultures. So, thank you. But it's, uh, I'm really excited. So, yes. Can I, can you tell?
Yes, we can tell. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bushy.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, uh, I'd like some information on the twenty-five cent cup fee. How was the twenty-five percent calculated? Um, and what, what is the purpose of that fee?
I can answer the second part of that question and then I'll see if, uh, the county can answer the first part. Uh, so the point of the twenty-five cent, uh, cup charge is to, similar to the bag charge that we've found that, well, the county is, and, uh, overall has found that, uh, charging someone can actually lead to behavior change. So it's trying to encourage people to start bringing in, uh, reusable cups. One of the main portions of the ordinance, uh, is to encourage people to bring out, that, bring their own takeout containers. Uh, so I would encourage people to bring their own cups. Since cups currently are exempt, um, we are not really reducing anything until a viable alternative is found. So that's kind of where they settle. Thank you.
Uh, wait a minute. Cups are exempt?
Cups are currently exempt because there isn't a viable alternative yet, since if a hot cup that may be made out of pla- uh, paper like this one is still plastic lined inside and our compost, um, facility cannot take that.
Okay, but so they're exempt from the ordinance, but not the twenty-five cent part of it?
Hmm.
Okay, so we still pair twenty-five cents.
Exactly.
But we can get the cups at, at some point in the future. Um, should a viable compostable cup come to exist, then we would not be able to get those kinds of cups.
Exactly.
Okay, we wouldn't have to pair twenty-five cents either.
Yes.
Aha, okay, great. Okay, um, moving on to the future, the, um, my next question is about the recyclable. Um, the things that, um, uh, will be permitted have to be, um, recycle, compostable. Um, is there a check made to ensure that they are actually bona fide compostable here in San Rafael? Corey's smiling because he knows how much he's lectured me on compa- on, um, contaminating the waste stream. Uh, so will we actually be able to, um, to, to compost these things?
Yeah, so the county has a guide online, um, that lists all of the current, um, items that are compliant to the ordinance. Um, so part of the technical assistance can, if the business needs to, to go over like this list with, uh, the county staff and, um, make sure that, that what they're purchasing is compliant.
Well, compliant with the county might not be compostable with the refuse hauler. That's the linkage that I'm looking for.
Oh, yes.
Are we doing that?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, the counties, uh, the county work with our con- with our waste hauler to make sure that what their list is also compostable with the facility.
Okay, because, you know, it's Ask Joe. Where does, it's on the, 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 the Marin sanitary website. Last question. Um, the feedback that, that you perceived, um, you, you didn't really talk too much about that. Could you tell us what, what are the, um, restaurants, particularly small and new restaurants, um, thinking? What is their position on this?
Sure. Um, so our biggest feedback was the compostables. Um, one thing to note is that we did do this in late two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so it's a little bit of a different area around costs. Um, but compostables were expensive, so that's definitely, uh, the main feedback that we got. And there was also a concern about the twenty-five cent cup charge um, and making sure that it's applied evenly to all the businesses or else it would create unfair competition, uh, which reassured the business that this is itemized and it would be required of all the businesses. Um, we also found, um, timing was an issue back then. Um, we also found um, timing was an issue back then uh with COVID nineteen. Uh, there was, there was a big concern with businesses uh allowing, taking in reusable um containers. Um, because they didn't want to make, they wanted to make sure that everything was um up to par. Um, there was also a concern with the performance of compostable foodware, uh, which the county addressed with creating this exempt list. Um, and then again, just health concerns with encouraging businesses to bring their own containers. Uh, there was also uh if, some concerns with supply chain at that moment that we did the, that we did the outreach. There was a lot of supply chain issues, not even with compostable, which is with com- containers overall. Um, and lastly, um, there were some concerns with branding and marketing with the take on containers. Um, as sometimes fiber products can't, they may take too much branding or even like the stamping may not be uh compliant. So, um, but yes, um, if you see on the tat- on the staff report, we have responses to all of the issues that we've identified and we work with the county through them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Hill?
I have uh two questions. So I noticed the five hundred ninety nine dollar grant. I think that's outstanding that the county would provide that. Um, uh, just as a question, are there any conditions on that five ninety nine in terms of the types of um, you have to produce receipts? Um, and I heard dishwasher and, and other things. What are, what are considered um, uh, items that are um qualified for the five hundred ninety nine dollars? It includes services or is it only kind of capital purchases?
I can start out answering this question and see if Gregory has an answer to that. That's correcting mine. Uh, from my understanding, it is mainly, the more of the, the three things that have been used for is mostly reusable uh foodware, starting out the first batch of compostable foodware, if they need to buy a dishwasher or uh some type of like system to be able to clean their reusable foodware. I'm not entirely sure if there's any other uses, Gregory.
Yeah, I think Walter's, Walter's correct. Uh, most of it's gonna be for just getting people started with their compostable ware. Let's try them out and see what works. Or they could buy reusables, compostables, or if they have small equipment that they want to put in, they can do that also. So that's something, Walter's correct in terms of those three being the main factors.
Thank you.
And uh, sorry, to answer the last part of your question, they would need to be able to provide some type of receipt. Um, but the county has been very helpful in uh being a little, uh, be like managing that. We had, for example, a business that they bought all their things at a flea market. And as long as they wrote a letter and signed it, that was, they were able to still get the money back.
Thank you. And then with respect to the temporary exempt products approach, um, I was reading that the county will yearly update the uh temporary exempt products list. Are there any other, uh, what are the modalities to keep people updated? When I think of just a webpage, it's a, it's kind of a passive mechanism to convey information. Is the engagement model for this to be like uh email? Uh, or what are the modalities to basically engage with all the business owners that would be affected?
I would pass this question along to Gregory.
Yeah, I think when you look at the ordinance, you know, it's mainly the deputy director of the county that's gonna be determined. So I see this being, my own take is being pretty fluid, although we have one year in there, you know. You know, as you know, Corey Walter might also say, you know, a lot of products that become available, they may happen within a week or a month. And we wouldn't want to delay something that would want to be used or be exempt. So I think it's gonna be fluid and for someone to get an exemption, they would come, you know, directly to environmental services. And then it'd be their me making that determination. So I think it's gonna be fluid throughout the year. So I wouldn't see like a year delay uh in terms of, you know, identifying something on the website. So we're gonna be pretty proactive.
Uh, thank you. And I, I hear what you're saying. It, it makes sense what you're saying, Gregory. I think what was written in the report is that, you know, once a year it would, it would come out. I actually think it would be good just to make sure we're setting good expectations, because I, I'm hearing what you're saying. I think all things being equal, I would love for it to be more fluid, but I also understand the need for folks to be able to have a predictable um outcome. So I guess what I'm hearing you say is maybe, am I hearing it a little bit differently than what's written in the report?
No, the, the report is correct. I just think, I, I just, I just want to make it clear that we're gonna be very proactive in what we do. You know, we don't want to sit uh just for one year, but you know, we're, we're here to do the outreach. We're gonna be here clear to have communication with you. Uh, we may have, most of the questions that are probably coming to us or what, you know, what would be on that list, you know? Um, and what would be available? And that's the, where the website comes in with identifying what is acceptable or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few follow up questions, uh, furthering the education and outreach question part of it. Cause that is um critical in order to have this be successful. And you had talked about soft enforcement. So I'm curious, and I don't know if Walter's, if this is for you or for Gregory, but I'm wondering if in that soft enforcement, is there a leave behind? It kind of goes to your modality question. How are people getting information? Because sometimes the people in the front of the house might not be the ones making a purchasing decision. So you have a conversation there. And if there's not a leave behind or something physical, then it might not get to the person making the purchasing. So I, I'm a little bit. Could, could you speak to, to that? Like how, how that, what the soft enforcement one looks like? And then if there's education component of that?
Yeah, I can try to answer that and Greg can add it on if um I'm speaking off turn. Uh, from my understanding, um, the county goes and does these um health inspections once a year, so they would start off in that way. Um, as I mentioned earlier today, they also, the businesses have the option to reach out to the county and we can provide information on this later, um, to request um technical assistance, which um they've hired two uh consultants um that are able to go and make these visits and help the businesses as they need. Um, so they are also able to deliver some outreach materials. Um, there has been a request to get, for example, for the twenty five cent cup charge to be able to um give that, like, give the customer an understanding that this is not something that the businesses has done. Uh, so they have created outreach materials, uh, but this is probably something a little bit that Greg can touch on a little more about their process.
Yeah, Walter's correct and his analysis so far. Just to add a couple of things to that is, you know, overall county, unincorporated cities and towns, we got about fourteen hundred food facilities and we're trying to make everything very, you know, consistent throughout that. And getting back to the inspection side, you know, uh, food facility, food vendor is gonna be inspected either every six months or one year. And everything so far has been very education oriented, outreach and uh, uh, focused, and we're gonna continue that. You know, even when we do our inspections on the health and safety code side, you know, in terms of, you know, food sanitation, we still focus on outreach and education, because the last thing we'll want to do is enforcement. So I think, I think one of the terms that may have been um, um, uh, maybe focused on with the, with the soft enforcement is that, you know, say come November that we start doing our inspections that are every six months or one year. Uh, we have different certain dis- districts throughout the county in terms of inspections on how, you know, food facilities are prioritized or like we might move through like a district of San Rafael. Let's say, you know, say there's so many restaurants, uh, you're not gonna do all the restaurants in one week. So as the inspections are done throughout those six months, uh, you know, the first time we go out and really dial in with either owner or operator, that's gonna be education and, and um outreach. So that gives you a full six months of more outreach, communication, collaboration. And if anything came up in those, we want to identify what they need, uh, how we can help. And if that happened to be a letter, that can be a letter or it could be on the inspection report. And then another six months or a year till the next inspection, um, you know, if they're not being diligent, you know, maybe we have another compliance letter. And enforcement might come down the line, but that could be even a year down the line, given the sequence that we want to filter in with the inspections. So what I'm saying is that, you know, our first free inspection, that's gonna be very heavy on outreach and education.
Thank you. No, we appreciate that re- where they repeated uh checking in and um, yeah, and, and sharing about that, how, how the ordinance would be in effect. Um, I had two other questions. One was, and we talked about this, so Vice Mayor and I actually thank you for meeting with us, Greg, and Dana was there and Walter and Cory. But one of the questions that came up a lot, if you could answer again, is around food trucks. I think San Rafael is different from other communities in that we have a lot of food trucks, probably more than there are unincorporated or other areas. So how does this apply to a food truck operator?
Uh, I'll take the first out of that, or Dana wants to jump in too, but you know, food trucks, you know, just like any kind of brick and mortar facility or, or a cart or, you know, full blown restaurant, they are a food facility, you know, defined with health and safety code. So they would, they would come under the ordinance, uh, but obviously they wouldn't have a lot of dine in out of food cart or a food truck. So that's the difference that I would see in those. But when you look at a, just to how a food truck operates, they are very, you know, they might sound simple, but they're very complex. Cause you're essentially putting the brick and mortar facility with uh, you know, the hot holding, the cold temperatures, the refrigeration, uh, sanitation, three compartment sink, all in the food truck. So um, they would be a food facility, they would be in compliance. Uh, we would still inspect them every six months or one year. So in one sense, you just gotta have that question whether dine in or dine out. Obviously, most of it's gonna be dine out. So um, I think that is about, I can go for on that if that answered the question, Mayor Kate.
Yeah, and it, I can jump in a little bit as well. Um, as Greg said, they, they would fall under this ordinance. They would need to comply. They are takeout only, so they would need to have compostable uh materials, except for the exempt items. They would be able to have items on the exempt list. But otherwise, they would need something that is compostable uh or aluminum that can be recycled. They would also need to do the twenty five cent cup charge. Uh, but they wouldn't have to do it on the receipt. A lot of them don't have receipts. They would just need it on a sign stating that that is what's going on. And we do have signage available for them that they can post. And my experience in visiting a lot of food trucks is they don't tend to have beverage dispensing machines and do the cups. A lot of their beverages are in aluminum and glass um containers, which are recyclable and are, and are allowed.
Thank, thank you, Dana. I don't know if you have your video on. We didn't know that you were here. So thank you for chiming in on that. And I actually have a follow up question because, and again, I'm trying to figure out how it, how it uh affects food trucks. It requires food vendors to provide clearly labeled separate waste receptacles. So is the thinking, there she is. There, um, so outside of a food truck, they would also be required to have those and, and maybe thirteen eighty three is gonna require that anyway. But I was curious about that, because food trucks are by nature movable and so they're gonna put more ex- literally exterior waste receptacles.
Yeah, that, that is referencing the thirteen eighty three rules. And basically it says where you have a waste receptacle available for your customer. So if you have waste receptacles, garbage cans available for your customers, you do need the other receptacles as well. And that's thirteen eighty three. So if it's a food truck that doesn't put out a trash can, I don't believe then they would have to have the, the three bins.
Okay, that, that makes sense. And then the last question, um, we know that the county's been talking to all the cities and towns in Marin, so all eleven cities and towns. If you could speak to the uh, the adoptions of the other cities and maybe some of the questions that have come up and, and just so we can understand where we are in the, the kind of the broader context of the other cities and towns.
Sure, uh, we've had, uh, I believe I'm looking at the list now, uh, three cities that have adopted the ordinance, Tiburon, Fairfax, San and Selmo. Uh, we have several cities that have had their first hearings already. Uh, and then a couple more that are still in the consideration phase and just starting it. And I can get more specific if you'd like, but we've had, all eleven cities have started to discuss it at the council level or have adopted.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. Do you have another question?
I did.
You did? Okay, Council member Hill.
Sorry, thank you. I was just wanna follow up. I, I was realizing that when I was thinking about the uh engagement model, is it at this moment assumed that the primary, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing that there's gonna be digital because of web, there's gonna be in person. Are there any other modalities? Like mail or are we presuming that most people are gonna be digitally enabled to, to interact with the county?
Um, I believe Greg kind of covered this, but the um, a lot of the interaction and education with the businesses themselves will happen during that in person inspection. And then there will be leave behind information that they can give their purchasing person. Um, and we've got those kits in development. Our technical services folks are using them as well. Uh, but then there'll also be communications that go out um to every food facility operator on the vendor list. And we did that during the outreach effort as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any other additional questions. I will turn to the public to offer their thoughts if they so choose. So I'll open the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers like to comment? Race down, come on down. Oh, you know what? Actually, I'm sorry, Rhonda, I even wrote myself a note. Rhonda had a card. So she gets to go first. I'm sorry I wrote my note, but that was a couple hours ago, so I forgot. Welcome, Rhonda.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Kate and council members, uh, thank you for taking this under consideration. And I am Rhonda Cutter, um, aide supervisor Dennis Redoni, District Four, Marin County. And um, I wanted to say first that it's been a great pleasure of mine over the last six years to work with Cory um, and his team here. Um, it's been changing. It's nice to meet you, Walter. Um, and you know, we started uh with the trash symposium years ago, developed Clean Marin, looking at different ways to deal with trash in our waste streams and in our, our communities. And some of the things that we've collaborated on, like the tarp your load, roadside dumping, and now we're coming to the reusable foodware ordinance. And one of the reasons I want to mention this is I think it's really important that we look at trash as a global issue. And starting here at the local level, if we can all work together, we will have more success. Um, I did want to point out that this is a really important issue for Supervisor Redoni personally, as well as um the fact that we do represent all the coastal communities that are very impacted by all the trash that comes out there. Um, because he started this effort and really took it on in two thousand eighteen after two um uh, third graders came to him as they had started a single use uh plastic ban in their community. And he's been championing it ever since. And they will be in high school uh before this goes into implementation. So please, I encourage you, let's move forward, let's work together. And you know, we're here if you have any questions. So uh, we look forward to our continued collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Welcome, Joanne.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and City Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Joanne Webster. I'm CEO of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to say thank you for listening to the business community back in two thousand twenty one, when this was first brought to us by the county. Um, at that time, um, Mr. Bidoff and his team did extensive outreach to the businesses. And we did find that there were obstacles to this. You heard it from staff tonight. Uh, there was a real lack of understanding. There was a fear that it was gonna cost a lot of money. There was a fear that it was gonna be really hard to comply. And on top of that, they were still digging out of the pandemic and they were really worried about, you know, taking this challenge on. Uh, we always wanted to support this ordinance. The timing wasn't right. We have many of our members complying now, so I'm here to tell you thank you. And we're supporting the ordinance and hope that you consider passing it tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Hi there, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm Jennifer Griner-Selig with Marin Sanitary Service. And I would love to encourage you guys as the city council members to pass this reusable foodware ordinance. As a hauler who also processes recyclables and organics, we manage loads literally of single use to go packaging where it contaminates our truly recyclable material and hinders our ability actually to recover desired items. Recycling in general won't solve the issue of waste. But be, bring, using re- usables and refusing single use items will really help. And I wanted to mention that all of us at MSS are available to assist. The food purveyors and consumers understand the problems with compostable plastics, which is not accepted by the Marin compost facility. And unfortunately, most plastics in themselves are not really recyclable. And that adds to this confusion amongst consumers, which we're doing, as you said, with uh, Where Does It Go, Joe, to help people know where it goes. And my, my whole team is out there day in and day out, trying to educate our um customers. And we really appreciate everybody pitching in because it's very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Marin sanitary is cruc- critical to the success of this, so thank you. Other public comment? Yep.
Alvateri Gersel Park. I'm not sure I fully understand what's being proposed. Uh, in my own words, it sounds like this is addressed at restaurants only, not supermarkets, for example. And concentrating on takeout food rather than in restaurant eating. And concentrating on takeout food rather than in-restaurant eating. Um, and for selfish reasons, I'll ask the following question. Uh, tomorrow morning, I will go to the Aroma Cafe and have coffee in a glass cup, which I assume is reusable. Does that have a twenty-five cent surcharge? Or it's like, no, we wanted to use glass. We've used glass for everything. We wouldn't have this problem. Could be one of the possible answers. The other question I had is how we define com- compostable? Where I'm sure there is a amount of time trash needs to sit in the ground before it turns into something else. And I'm wondering if this recommended and changeable list of approved items will have a gradient that improves over time to become more and more friendly with the earth as it composes.
Thank you. After public comment, we'll ask your questions. Thank you, Mr. Beteri. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen any public comment in the chambers? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this item?
If you wanna comment on Zoom, please use that raise hand feature. And if you're commenting by phone, press star nine. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment. Uh, I see several hands at this time.
Yes. Good evening. This is Barry Toronto again at Terre Linda. Um, very excellent presentation by city staff and, uh, responses by the county uh, employees. I appreciate knowing that this is coming from the county. Not something that Centerfell is doing alone. My concern is, it'd be great to distinguish, uh, what's required of of, uh, when you do takeout and, uh, food delivery, um, what's the cost gonna be to the consumer? I think it's important to stress that you're always asking questions about the people providing the product. How about the people buying the product? To tell you the truth, the extra twenty-five cents for the cup is gonna determine whether I buy that cup of coffee or not, because coffee prices have gone up tremendously. So, uh, uh, so to buy a cup of coffee now is almost four dollars. And add the other twenty-five cents. So the importance is, is to put the signs in a conspicuous place in both Spanish and English where people can know that the next twenty-five cents is being added on. But if the cup, it what which which businesses are exempt? Is Pete's exempt because you're, I believe it's a compostable cup that they're using, uh, that they're supplying, uh, uh, or or what? And also, um, uh, and so it's only applied to certain type of cups? That you're charging the food, the twenty-five cents? Or not? Because I, uh, you this is kind of a regressive tax in some ways. The people who want that cup of coffee or whatever, or that takeout food on because they have to eat on their job. And if it costs more money, it's it it's gonna hurt them. The people with lower income than the people with a higher income. I hope you can answer some of these questions and clarify which businesses are exempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Janice Reynolds, co-chair of Plastic Free Marin. This ordinance was created to protect human and environmental health in our communities. The majority of the public understands that we are drowning in single-use waste. To-go can- containers are used for an average of fifteen minutes and thrown away. Ninety-five million single-use drink cups are thrown away in Marin County per year. Most of the to-go containers, even the ones that say compostable contain toxic chemicals like PFAS that are harmful to humans and the environment. PFAS has been linked to a range of health concerns, including low infant birth rate, weight, immune system impacts, cancer, and thyroid hormone disruption. Three state bills that are currently in effect and are covered by this ordinance are SB thirteen eighty-four, which Walter mentioned, Assembly Bill twelve seventy-six, which required food requires food businesses to make to-go utensils and accessories by request only. AB twelve hundred bans sale or distribution of food, beverage, or products packaging that contain PFAS. For over four months, Susan Hop and I have been providing techno- technical assistance on behalf of the county to educate and award grants to help businesses meet the ordinance requirements. We have learned that most businesses want to do the right thing, but just need some guidance. The requirements of this ordinance are already in play throughout Marin. Eight, every jurisdiction except Port of Madera is on track to meet the May tenth deadline. That in itself shows that businesses and the public are supportive of the ordinance in reducing single-use waste. Thank you for considering this ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, um, hello, council members. I'm Susan Hop, co-chair of Plastic Free Marin. Thank you for giving the attention to the reusable foodware ordinance. And I wanna credit and thanks thank the sustainability team, um, led by Cory and Walter for all the preparation to get us to the hearing. I'm a resident of Mill Valley, but like so many, I frequent San Rafael for the entertainment, numerous restaurants. And Marinites are actually very alarmed by the pervasiveness of single-use plastic waste. And this is action we can take as a county. This ordinance is about dispelling confusion to citizens and businesses businesses alike about what goes where in the waste stream. It's about getting everyone on the same page and aware of the destination of our local waste and the toxicity within. For instance, banning the linings of PFAS chemicals. It's about upholding, um, Marin organic values. Our our compost is in high demand from farmers and wineries. And this is the reason our community waste hauler partners like Marin Sanitary, Recology, and Mill Valley Refuge have come together to endorse the, uh, reusable foodware ordinance. For businesses moving to reusables where possible represents proven cost savings. And the ordinance provides some guardrails and gives us a way forward away from single-use toward a healthier community. Please support this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Annika Alsborn with Sustainable San Rafael. I am very excited about the proposed reusable foodware ordinance. In order to reduce single-use plastic waste, I led the transition to one hundred percent zero-waste school supplies over four years at a local elementary school. Uh, so reducing plastic waste is very close to my heart. And like many of you, I have seen the impact of single-use plastics on our environment, picking up straws, utensils, plastic wrappers, and other plastics right here in the San Rafael Canal and at our local beaches over the years. Uh, Sustainable San Rafael urges your adoption of the proposed uh, ordinance. This is a significant step toward keeping unnecessary plastic and paper foodware out of our landfills and assuring that takeout containers and accessories are fully compostable. Thank you, Walter and Cory, for your hard work on this ordinance. Uh, the requirement of reuse reusable foodware and utensils for sit-down meals in restaurants and cafes not only reduces plastic waste, but also enables leftover food to be properly disposed of in green carts for conversion to compost or food to energy electricity. In addition, requiring reusable or natural fiber organic foodware for takeout meals keeps plastics and other chemicals from polluting resource recovery streams and the larger environment. Um, Sustainable San Rafael urges that you continue to ramp up these benefits through public education and suggest collaboration with Marin Sanitary Service. I wonder if we can ask San Rafael businesses for already using clean, plastic-free alternatives as models to help engage and educate other businesses who may be less familiar with plastic alternatives. Uh, we also urge that you work with state and federal representatives to expand extended producer responsibility laws so that corporations responsible for coating grocery packaging and plastics and other compostable materials are prohibited from doing so.
Thank you, Annika. And we did receive the letter from Sustainable, uh, San Rafael as well. So thank you.
Good evening, council members. This is Andy Najerese with the Agricultural Institute of Marin and just want to urge you to pass the ordinance tonight. We really wanna commend the team, uh, Cory and his team and the folks at, uh, the County of Marin for developing this ordinance in a very inclusive way and listening to the community of food makers and farmers um, and restaurant owners. And we really appreciate the focus on reducing contamination in our waste streams. Despite how hard we try to eliminate, uh, compostable or, uh, bioplastics from our waste streams, we still face time and time again, a lot of challenges. And taking this bold action will really help to address the problem and have a clean, organic bin. So we just really appreciate that. We also thank and appreciate that there is an exemption of the twenty-five cent charge for disposable cups for people who shop with CalFresh Snap and Wick customers. Lastly, one other thing we wanted to note is just with the grant program. Um, one of the barriers that we've heard, especially among cottage food operators, as well as, uh, newly formed, uh, micro enterprise home kitchen operators, as well as temporary food facilities, that getting access to dishwashing facilities is is a really significant barrier, not only to obtain the dishwashers and then to also pay for ongoing water and, uh, electricity for the dishwasher as well. So um, if there's any way to think about increases from an equity standpoint um, for people at lower income levels to have greater support for dishwasher operations, um, that would go a really long way with our community. So thank you again and urge your support.
Thank you, Andy.
Hi, this is Bridget Clark, and I wanted to mention that, um, reducing single-use plastics is being done globally. I was speaking to a friend who was in New Zealand this last week, and they mentioned how, um, wooden utensils are the only things offered at airports and to-go. Um, so I think that there are others that are already setting the example that we should follow. Um, with the twenty-five cent, uh, charge for single-use cups, um, this will encourage people to think about bringing you to you reusable cups. Um, as we have sort of been trained to as well with water bottles. Um, I feel that this behavior change is very possible, given what we've done, um, with reducing plastic bottles. And, um, I just appreciate you taking the time to, uh, to consider adopting this reusable foodware ordinance, because it will help from a health and environment standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, we're ready for you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Hi, Julie Monroe, and I'm a longtime Marin resident. And I frequent restaurants and, uh, delis and other establishments in San Rafael. And I fully support this ordinance. Reusables are best for the planet and safer for human health. They reduce greenhouse gas emissions, save water, and eliminate the plastic pollution at its source. And reusable save restaurants money. We need to step up and join other Marin towns that have adopted the ordinance to make a standard possible throughout Marin County. The time is now, and we cannot go on polluting our environment. San Rafael, please adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Kim Corona, we're ready for you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Kim Corona. I am a resident in San and Selmo, but longtime Marin resident. And I recently finished a term on the San and Selmo Climate Action Commission and was active in the initial adoption of this English ordinance that we have had intact there since twenty eighteen. Um, and I wanted to thank you all for listening to this proposal for the town of San Rafael and the county, and really encourage you to consider passing this. Uh, there are some flaws in it, and I know there's some points of, you know, confusion to clear up among the businesses and whatnot. But I do feel like it's 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 all measures that can be worked through, and it is a great starting place. And we do need to start somewhere. And we do need to consider that, you know, there are plenty of other communities that have been doing this, not just in Marin, but as the previous speaker, Bridget Clark, had mentioned, in other countries, it's been a a thing. And also just consider how relatively new takeout in itself is for, you know, the times we're in. I know it's been a massive influx of it because of the um, pandemic, but it's something I think we can change, change our tune in and really go in a different direction. So thank you for taking the time tonight to hear this, and I really encourage your support on it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kim.
Marilyn Price?
Yes, hi, uh, thank you. And actually, I live in Mill Valley, um, but I wanna applaud the, um, uh, Sierra Club's, um, committee that has been working on this since twenty eighteen. It has taken that long to get as far as we are. This is, uh, not a huge issue, but an important issue, uh, to to just add to all the things that we have to do, and we have to move quickly. Because, um, our planet needs a lot of help. So thank you so much for considering this tonight.
Thank you.
I see no other hands up this time. We'll just skip it a couple seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. I jotted down a couple of questions and we'll see. Ready? Okay. So I I heard six questions in there. Some are pretty similar. Uh, one is regarding, does this apply to supermarkets? Next question is, if I'm there from Mr. Beteri, and he has a glass um, on-site cup of coffee, is he charged twenty-five cents? And I actually think a lot of these questions are really indicative of the confusion around the consumer standpoint. So um, so thank you for, if you feel like you've answered them, it's good to answer them again, because I think there's confusion. Third, a definition of compostable. Fourth question, food delivery. How is that applied? How is it being applied? Is there a cost to consumer? Just what does that look like? Um, who is exempt? And the question was specifically, are there businesses exempt? And then the last was, is there any consideration for support? I think that's financial support for the dishwasher requirement.
Thank you. Um, so I can take most of these questions. Um, so the first one, yes, this would apply to supermarkets. So if a supermarket, for example, like Whole Foods or Andy's Market sells, uh, hot food, they would have to comply to the ordinance. It wouldn't apply, for example, if the food, um, let's say if you get a sandwich that was pre-packed in Sonoma, uh, because we don't have jurisdiction over there, that would be exempt. Um, so in regards to the reusable foodware, if you like, for example, get a cup, a reusable cup at a at a coffee shop, no, you wouldn't get charged the twenty-five cents. Um, this is only for to-go, uh, cups. Um, so defining compostable, I can take a crack at this, and maybe Dana can, uh, fill in if I misspeak. But how we're defining compostable at the moment is based on how our waste management uh, co- company that takes a compost, uh, defines it. So as someone previously mentioned, we, uh, our compostable, um, facility does, uh, have organic compost, which means that we can't take bioplastics. So they really, our compost is really very strict, um. Food, it's like food, um, paper products that are not, uh, plastic lined and so on. So I don't, Dana, do you have anything to add to that or Cory?
No, I mean, I think that covers it. Compostable means that it will break down or otherwise become part of usable compost in a safe and timely manner. That's kind of the definition of compost. But then our local definition of compost is something that is accepted by W and Earth Care, uh, Redwood Landfill, so that it can be included in our certified organic compost that we use on our ranches, farms, and vineyards.
Thank you. Um, the other question was, um, a concern with takeout and food delivery. Um, so if, since, since this is applying to food vendors, um, they're the ones that are supplying the the food, so they would have to comply to the ordinance. The only exemption that they have is that you would not be required, the restaurant wouldn't completely be required to ask if they need, I believe it's cup lids and straws. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dana. I think it's like two specific things. But other than that, they have to comply completely with ordinance. And, uh, the other question was, is someone like Pete's exempt because they have a compostable cup? So no. Our, uh, compost facility does not take any bioplastics or anything that's plastic lined. So they are still would have to comply to the ordinance. So you would still get charged for twenty-five cents for a cup at Pete's. Um, and this ordinance applies to all, um, uh, single-use cups. So if it's a smoothie that you get a Jamba Juice or something that you get at Starbucks, if it's a single-use cup, that, uh, the ordinance, um, takes effect on that. Uh, and there are no businesses that are exempt from the cup charge. And, um, the dishwasher question, I don't have a great answer for that. Um, the only The only current financial assistance that we have is the county's grant program. That is all that's planned at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, do you have any more on the dishwasher? Because I'm sure you heard that when you were talking to other jurisdictions.
Yeah, and I just wanted to do one clarification on that 25 cent charge. It would not be applied at Aroma Cafe where you're using a glass mug. It's reusable, so no charge. Also, if you go to, say, Pete's, that was the other example he brought up, if you get a single-use disposable cup, there would be a charge, but you could also bring in a reusable mug, get that refilled, and there would not be the 25 cent charge. So there are ways to avoid that charge, and that is the point of having it there. And then the clarification on support for dishwashing. Right now, our grant limit is set at $599. If we go higher than that, there are tax implications for the business receiving it, and we wanted to avoid that because it does, you know, put additional burdens on the entity receiving those funds. So that's why we set it at that amount. These entities are not required to have the dishwashing things. Some of those micro businesses, they're not doing dine-ins. They would not have to do reusables. So we would want to work with each business to figure out how best to serve them.
Great. Well, as we could tell from both the questions and the staff report, there will be a lot of education outreach that needs to occur.
Yes. This is a first step. It's going to.
And we definitely heard that from the public, too. It's a great first step. So I will bring it back to my colleagues for additional comments. And the vice mayor, I know you can barely contain yourself. Go ahead.
I know. No, I really want to thank especially our sustainability team because I know this is an ordinance that started like in the county, and we are thankful for that. As our wonderful Joan Webster from the chamber says, our businesses were not ready last year, and this year we had like a deadline to comply, to be, you know, comply, thank you, with the county. So I know our team has been working so hard and doing it so quickly, and it's such a great presentation. So thank you. I really, really appreciate you. We would definitely wanted to do it quickly and take advantage of the savings from the county, but also, you know, we have the most businesses in the county and also the most diverse. So we want to do it right. I had like different meetings through MCCMC Climate Action Committee that I was co-chairing, Marin County Council, some mayors, so something like that. And I really want to appreciate also Dana Armanino because I don't know how many meetings we have been participating together where you have been explaining how it works. Something that came up from those meetings were the chambers. The chambers, maybe they are like a great way, a great tool to promote this ordinance. I know you have the great green business program to promote those businesses, so maybe everybody has to do it now, but I love the idea of having some champions to do that. I love the idea of compostable, not only for the containers, because it's going to eliminate the garbage, but also the food that goes with the container that we put in the garbage is going to be great to put it there. It's cheaper, too, because we're going to have less garbage. So more compostable, and compostable for homeowners is free. And like thinking about the garbage, where does it go? I mean, I'm just repeating everything I'm hearing here, but it really goes nowhere. And, you know, I work right by the ocean, and you just don't see it like floating. You see it like entangled in birds and fish and whales, and it's terrible. So I'm thinking, bring your own cups. I started doing that, except for today that I forgot. And I proposed the council to start bringing our own cups instead of using these ones, and I'd be very happy to make a motion.
Okay, when the time is right. Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, staff in San Rafael. Thank you for folks at county. Thank you for community for making certain that this is a priority. We've known for a long time, among other things, that plastics have been in our environment in ways that are extremely harmful to all biology, ourselves and all the fauna and flora. It's time. This is a strong and bold step. I'm encouraged by the degree of engagement that has gone on to date, and this is a very strong first step. There has been focused on the personas of businesses as well as our waste haulers tonight. But my general call to the community is that there are so many decisions that we can make in what we buy and how we buy it, and demand that we make on businesses. Not just the local businesses, but all the products that are made today. There are so many that continue to be plastic, and every consumer can make better decisions. I know I can. So I'm looking forward to making a first firm, bold step this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I support the comments of my colleagues. This will be an exciting opportunity with, through education and outreach, to remind us all of the permanent nature of plastic and the choices that we can make to have less plastic. I am greatly persuaded and delighted that the county and our team have been working with the chamber, representing all of our businesses and the waste haulers, so that we have a coordinated and coherent and comprehensive way to address this in a meaningful way that has a real impact in the real world. So when the time comes, I would be delighted to support this measure.
Fantastic. And I concur with my colleagues, Walter. Fantastic presentation. I know this was a lot of work. Thank you, Corey, for your leadership on it. It aligns perfectly with 1383. We're going to be talking a lot about how we look at waste and things that are not reusable or recyclable. So this is part of that broader conversation we'll be having. Huge thanks to the county, to county staff, Dana, and to Greg for answering our many, many, many questions and for being a partner and a collaborator in this effort, and Supervisor Redoni and his staff. I have to just say, San Rafael got a little tight on the timing for various reasons, and Supervisor Redoni and the team were able to work with the timing in front of us and having the first reading before the county ordinance deadline. So really appreciate your flexibility. This is a big deal, and it was important that we do all the steps we needed to do internally to get to this moment. And then finally, the community, and Councilmember Hill mentioned it. We had many people that called in tonight, and we also had people that have contacted us recently over the months. And we'll be changing their purchasing behavior and how they show up, so we really rely on them for this success. So I know, yes, vice mayor, and it's very specific, but Deputy City Clerk has asked us to do this recommended action right here. Just do this. No.
Start with that one first?
Yes. Yes. No, they're the same. So just do this one.
Okay, well, it is my pleasure to make a motion to waive further reading of the ordinance and refer it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second prior to the reading of the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. And Deputy City Clerk, could you read this title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Rafael amending the San Rafael Municipal Code to repeal and replace Chapter 10.92, prohibition on use of polystyrene foam disposable food packaging with new Chapter 10.92 Regulation of Foodware for Retail Food Vendors.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Orin Giladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving right along. We still have a few agenda items. The next one is the BioMarin Development Agreement. And I will see who will be. A lot of people sitting in the seats today. Everybody's showing up. Okay. Chris Hess, welcome. All right.
It's my turn, and I hope to be blessedly short for the council. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What we're here for right now is our obligation to do an annual review of the BioMarin Development Agreement in a public hearing. The staff recommendation is to adopt the report that BioMarin submitted. This is the third anniversary of a development agreement that we negotiated with BioMarin in March 2023. The agreement was to exchange the entitlements and certain concessions on fees for various public benefits. The staff has reviewed BioMarin's report on this, and we believe them to be in compliance for this report, for this development agreement to be in really great shape. So very briefly, a couple of highlights on this. The BioMarin has transferred the property at 999 Third Street to Vivilon and completed remediation along with PG&E. That is a project under construction and will soon be providing much-needed senior affordable housing to our community. They have also paid on-time installments that they agreed on to contribute to a shuttle service and to traffic improvements. And then finally, they have licensed some temporary public parking for the citizens of San Rafael as agreed upon. There are some other interesting items in the development agreement which are still to come, mainly traffic improvements, bike lane improvements, which will be due upon the certificate of occupancy for the laboratory buildings that they are constructing. All signs are really good, and we definitely urge the acceptance of the report and would love to hear your questions and public comments.
Thank you. Questions, vice mayor?
No questions.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Bushy? See, you wowed us with that staff report. I also don't have any other questions. So we will open the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone racing down. Anyone virtually like to comment on the BioMarin Development Agreement?
If you'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and if commenting on phone, please press star nine. I see no public comment at this time. No further comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back for comments from the council and then a motion. Comments, vice mayor?
Thank you so much for the report, and BioMarin is a great business in our community, and I'm really love everything they are doing, so I'm happy to, you know, support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
I concur with the vice mayor. BioMarin has been a great partner to the city, employs many folks that live here, and has honored the development agreement to the T in terms of degree that's been completed. I look forward to supporting the action of accepting the third anniversary annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I too support accepting the report, and I look forward to the construction of the major buildings there, but am delighted with the progress that has been made with Vivilon. But we've got some big steps to take in the future, and I'm sure we will.
Thank you. And I'll just say, thanks again for bringing this to us. They are longtime partners, and we look forward to the continued development, as my colleagues have just said. So with that, I would accept a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the third anniversary annual report for the executed development agreement ordinance number 1982 between BioMarin Pharmaceutical and the City of San Rafael for the development of an expanded San Rafael Corporate Center, 757 90 Lindaro Street and 781 791 Lincoln Avenue and 99 Third Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Orin Giladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Hess. And the final part of our agenda, oh, no, two more. Nope, 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 nope. Luckily, you have a council that has incredible stamina, so we are delighted that we have the downtown San Rafael Business Improvement District discussion, and I see Director Hinkle has joined us, and there are quite a few actions here, so look forward to the conversation.
Great, thank you. Walter did such a great job earlier today. I was like, I was gonna ask Jim if I could use him for my presentation next time, so. Let me just pull up my PowerPoint. Of course, he closed everything. All right. So, good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers, Micah Hinkle, Economic Development Director. Before you tonight is the San Rafael Business Improvement District Transition. Just a quick background for the bid itself. It's a city authorized economic vitality tool from the state bid law, and this is from the Streets and Highways Code. Bid assessment tool is used for safety, cleaning, marketing events, enhancement projects. And we've had one for a good amount of time. The San Rafael Business Improvement District was established in 1979, expanded in 2013, basically runs the spine of Fourth Street from the freeway to the west end. Currently, the bid, as we've kind of come across it, is managed by the Bid Corporation, which is a standalone 501(c)(6), which is actually, its intent is to actually implement the bid. And that's where you would see our volunteer board members, which is our small business owners, other members of the San Rafael Downtown Business Community, along with our part-time executive director. So one thing that we picked up, and this is going back into December when we authorized the assessments for this year. The bid annual report called out some really concerning operational standpoints of the revenue that's really that the bid's been collecting. The pandemic really has shortened the revenue collection for downtown. And basically, pre-pandemic was about $80,000 a year. 2022, it was about $61,000, and this year it's about $54,000. But a light 25% reduction in operations is really impactful to any organization, any business support group. And on top of that, it's also increased operational costs, our staffing costs, insurance. So there really is a concern in terms of its overall operational standpoint. The big thing that we've really picked up on was, for the annual report, was the reserve fund spending. In order to meet basically the programming for the bid, the Bid Corporation has been utilizing its reserve funds. $18,000 in 2022, and then for 2023, projected at $16,000. That really leaves only really a pretty minimal amount of their kind of reserve dollars available. It's about $27,000. So basically, there's a two-year horizon before insolvency comes in place. So looking ahead on this, you know, really there's an opportunity to kind of look to recast the bid, its players, its approach, the needs of the city and the downtown. So it's really a strategic initiative and really one of the key targets of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, really tying together the main pieces, which are the businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, which is one of our partners, along with the city. One key element that's been missing from kind of the equation of downtown is engagement of the property owners. They have equal stake in this and recognizing the needs of the downtown are changing. The bid revenue so far is not enough to support the downtown and its desired programs. You know, as we did the Economic Development Strategic Plan outreach, you know, cleanliness, safety, marketing, special events, placemaking, there are multiple programments that were identified as part of our outreach efforts. And they've been echoed in our downtown precise planning, just our outreach, Mayor Kate's walkabouts. The community is looking for more from the downtown. And this is recognizing the downtown needs are evolving. So our approach in our partnership strategy also needs to evolve with it. This is a factor of new property owners coming into downtown, investing, new businesses coming in in the pipeline. So before you is basically two sets of agreements. The first is one for the Chamber of Commerce. And really, it's set up to administer the bid program, notify non-payment assessments. These are kind of highlights of the scope of work that we've kind of been working through. And this scope of work we've developed is actually something that's been happening for a period of time, even preceding my time here with the city, of really, how do we work with Chamber of Commerce, the Bid Corporation, and the city for this partnership? But it really does call out really the administration side. There are costs associated with running this program. We really need to understand a little bit deeper if this is something that we should continue to move upon or potentially modify or adjust, or potentially abandon because of its administration cost. The chamber would be set up to do the administration, notifying of non-payment assessments. So basically, like a notification, a courtesy notification, hey, you may have forgotten to pay your assessment this year. Develop stakeholder engagement, and this is kind of a critical part of the Chamber of Commerce's scope. We need to do a better job of understanding all the players within businesses and property owners to confirm the downtown needs and then potentially support. to confirm the downtown needs and then potentially support owner engagement to look at a different framework, which is what's called a property-based improvement district. So it changes it, not, not just the business owners who pay into the service, but property owners themselves. In terms of the Bid Corporation, the current management entity of, of the bid is, would be to complete approved tasks until June 2023, which includes May Madness and Dining on Their Delights. There's about $15,000 in operational expenses that would come from the assessments and then provide closeout financials, about $5,000 to make sure you have a CPA come and review all, all the financials and then transfer the bid program. This is one key element when we're working with the different groups is really about the advisory board. You know, who's in charge of this? How, what kind of feedback do we provide? The advisory board appointments are currently out of date. Typically, they, they are the same appointments of the Bid Corporation, but during the pandemic, we did not update those. So now we have to kind of true up that and make sure they're reflective of really what the, what the current board is. Staff's recommending the current Bid Corporation Board be appointed as the Bid Advisory Board with an additional member from the Chamber of Commerce. That member's called out within the staff report. The Bid Advisory Board maintains its same position, which would be complete the annual report and in this case also recommend a board appointments for the next period of time, 2024. The last piece of this is, I think, really critical to this program, which is establishing administrative guidelines, which has the roles and responsibility of the bid program. Who does what and why? When is it due? What do these reports do? What should it contain? So we can keep a prize of progress and any issues that arise from, from the creation of this approach. So for the partnership on this one, it really does need, this is a critical element. And when we evaluated the downtown, its need and its growth, that spine of the current bid, bid boundaries only covers Fourth Street. But when we recognize downtown, it's actually much larger than that and its needs are much larger. So really that bid, chamber, city, property owners are really necessary to actually reach the downtown growth that we're imagining and envisioning. The greater service partnership, this is what we anticipate from this partnership agreement, is having greater service from owners, businesses, chamber and the city, that there's synergy about it. We're all going in the same direction. We can work together and identify issues and hopefully solve them or provide a pathway for success. Also, a better understanding of the cost structure for bid administration and operations. This is one I think has been really, really challenged to kind of hone down on because the special events has been the primary program. What is the cost associated with special events versus administration of the bid? Kind of fairytale or pulling out those costs to really recognize, it actually takes a lot to actually administer a program of this nature. The ultimate goal on this is after the two-year period, we would evaluate the below options. We're really kind of three outcomes. Either we form a property-based improvement district, we amend the current business improvement district, or we determine if the, the bid or the P-bid is not a viable, is not viable to administer. But I will say, oops. I will say that this opportunity to partner in this, I think has been the most critical piece. I think we've been really siloed in our approaches. The city working on a program, the chambers working on a program, the bids working on a program. The opportunity to use the chamber as that bridge and support the bid, the downtown businesses with the city, I think is the critical piece to kind of help us move us forward. We've done outreach with both the chamber in negotiating this agreement and the Bid Corporation. And there's still some, some potential issues associated with it. And it's really about trust and I think this is that opportunity to say that it's time to turn the page on this and work on an actual program approach on how to get the downtown of what it needs to be successful. So with that, staff recommendation is to authorize the Chamber of Commerce agreement, appoint the Bid Advisory Board, authorize the Bid Corporation agreement and adopt administrative guidelines for the bid. So I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions?
I do not have any questions at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Bushy, any questions?
Just a, a quick one. Could you give us some general order of magnitude of the outstanding issues that you mentioned? Are these details that you're confident can be resolved in an orderly way?
Can you clarify a little more about the, I guess my comments on outstanding issues?
Okay, you, you said that there were some things that were yet to be resolved?
I think it was the final contract terms and that's really some of that's negotiate. The authorization, the city manager to negotiate the final contract terms. You have a draft version with, within your staff, your staff packet?
Okay, so it's just, it's just routine matters then?
Yes, and then for me, it's, it's also the final closeout for the bid operations. To actually have that financial review that basically say that all assessment dollars have been appropriately accounted for.
Okay, just orderly business matters.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Micah, for your presentation. I had a question on, can you characterize collection of assessments among the approximately 700 businesses inside the BID scope? How would you characterize current level of collections?
So the collections are done through our business, our annual business license process. So as part of business license renewals or new business licenses, that's where the bid collection comes into play. And, and those range, they're relatively small dollars, it's like, you know, $50 to $400 depending on the business type. But in terms of, there are some businesses who, who neglect to pay the business license itself. And then as part of that, neglect to pay the bid assessment. Or they pay one but not the other. So the collection approach on this was simply a courtesy notice to say, you know, we've not received your 2023, you know, you're within the assessment district, we haven't received your 2023 business payment. You know, here are the instructions to make that payment and that is the extent of it. Business-based bid collections are actually very challenging. And this is something through my career of, of working with multiple business-based bids. It, it's almost cost prohibitive to continue to go after those small dollars, amount of staff time and how much collections are required. So in essence, this is a courtesy notice to, to, to the businesses just to let them know. But it does make a difference to let people know that, that they haven't paid the required assessments that council has authorized and was been put forth by the bid district itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one question. So for a local business owner that's currently paying into the bid with this proposal and this change, how will that affect their experience? Or will it not affect their experience?
From the perspective of a, a business owner, I don't think it makes much change. You know, the, the same bid board is, is available to them for issues or concerns. The programming of the dollar still goes with them. And even the, the staffing of it, I think actually changes actually for the better. Because you also, not, in addition to the, I guess the, the bid program support manager or the current executive director, who does the special event process, there's also going to be the Chamber of Commerce to provide those follow-up or concerns along with the city. As I said, this is that three-party approach to say, how do we move stuff forward? How do we support our business community in a better way? And I think it's just recognizing that the resources that were split right now have better synergy together.
Fantastic. Thank you. Not seeing any other further questions, we'll take public comment on this item. Joanne, thank you for being here this evening.
Late evening. Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council for this opportunity. I have immense gratitude for your confidence and your faith in both the Business Improvement District and the Chamber of Commerce to work collaboratively with the city staff to create a beautiful and thriving downtown that's post-COVID. So this is a really new agreement. It's a new way to do things, but I think it can really work. And the timing is right, especially with the potential adoption of the strategic plan. So we all know that downtown San Rafael is the heart of our city and when people think of San Rafael, they think of Fourth Street. And so having a vibrant downtown corridor is so crucial to the overall success of our city. And that means supporting our existing small businesses, creating new business development. It means having vibrant events and cultural opportunities and focus on beautification efforts in different ways that we can attract visitors. So I believe that all three entities working together, putting time and energy and resources in, we have, we can go a long way with this shared vision. So again, I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone else. See if there's anyone online who'd like to comment on this item.
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. If you're commenting by phone, please press star nine. I don't see any comments. Just give it a few more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back and I'll, actually I'm gonna start with, change it up a little bit, start with Councilmember Hill as we've been, he's been very, very invested in terms of working with the bid and being their liaison, actually.
Yeah, thank you. I was recently able to join the Economic Development Subcommittee. Thank you, Vice Mayor Yorin Galati, for carrying the torch for so long and allowing me to take it on. The, the most important thing, I think, to all of us, we would agree, is a vibrant downtown for the sake of the mission of BID Chamber in the city. This is so important. There are, our journey to make certain that we have a sustainable concern that will continue to enact that mission is very vital and important here. I, I heard you say, Micah, that there are, continue to be details to be worked out. My personal commitment is to lean in and be present to make certain that we get to that point. I think that I'm very encouraged on where this is going. And I believe that this is our path towards a sustainable concern for the sake of a beautiful downtown. So thank you for putting so much thought into this. All stakeholders, including the Chamber of Commerce, thank you, Joanne Webster and your team, as well as the Business Improvement District. There have been, the Business Improvement District is not just about the assessments. There is a, there are dollars there, obviously. But so much heart has gone into this over the years from every business owner and every community member that engages with our businesses. This is what we all want in our community. So thank you so much for leaning in, Micah, and all stakeholders for making this real tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yorin Galati?
Yeah, no, I think this, this just makes sense. I met Joanne Webster when we were both in the BID a few years back. And I, I remember sometimes it was the frustration, like what can we do with this amount of money? And, you know, so I feel it's, it's, it's a grace, it has great synergy, being able to partner with the great chamber that we have and the city, the, I completely agree with the, you know, downtown and the vitality that we really need to, to have. So I'm really excited about this partnership. So I, I thank you for working on the, on the agreement and I look forward to, to see, you know, what type of events, what type of incentives you are going to have. One comment I will have is when I'm, I'm looking at the advisory committees, maybe to try to engage more with restaurants or breweries, like merchants. I, I see representation, but I think it would be really nice to engage with them and at the same time, I know that they are always really busy. So, so I know that, but, but yeah, it's, this is exciting. So thank you very much and I definitely endorse.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I think the word for this agenda item is synergy. It's very obvious and it pulls it all together and will make more than some of the whole. So I think it's a, it's a, a great proposal. I support it and I guess we'll take turns reading the resolutions.
Yes, yes you will. And I'll just add a few brief comments. A shared vision, we all want the vibrant downtown. Everyone up on this dais, everyone in this room, our local businesses and our staff. And this will enable us to continue to, to see, to achieve that vision. And I want to thank the volunteer BID board. I know that Director Hinkle has been talking with them. I know that Director Webster has been talking with them a lot. And these are folks that have their own businesses and in addition, because they believe so much in the economic engine of our downtown, they're willing to spend that extra time. And I truly believe that having this chamber, a collaboration, having the city synergy and support will actually help them to really use their time for making the decisions around the BID versus some of the administrative things and the things that ultimately weren't necessarily manifesting in the street. And that's something that the chamber can provide, that kind of back of the house type of things. And we will absolutely need the BID going forward and their ongoing volunteerism and commitment to it. So I'm really excited and I do want to say thank you to the city manager as well because I know that this is something that has been talked about for well over a decade. And to have it being talked about tonight or having it about to be voted on, I think this is really bold and amazing and will turn a incredible page on our economic development downtown and that will enhance all of San Rafael. So I have heard that you guys are gonna take turns reading resolutions. There are quite a few. So, Councilmember Bushy, why don't you start with the first one?
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution appropriating funds and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a downtown business improvement district management and enhancement agreement with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce in an amount of $100,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Vice Mayor?
I move that we approve our resolution appointing downtown business improvement district advisory board members.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Councilmember Hill?
I move that we adopt a resolution appointing downtown business improvement district advisory board members.
Oh wait, no, the next one, next one, next one.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the downtown business improvement district transition agreement with the downtown San Rafael Business Improvement District, BID Corporation, in an amount of $5,000 resolution appointing downtown business improvement district advisory board members.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Final one?
I'll take it. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the downtown business improvement district administrative guidelines.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries four zero and it's a testament to all the details that there were five motions and, or four motions to make that happen. Thank you. And the last item on our agenda this evening is the Community Development Block Grant. And welcome. Nice to have you here. Wait, is your, I don't think your microphone's on, Alexis. Okay. Thank you for your patience. You get to see the breadth of city business this evening.
All right. Good evening. I'm presenting the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2023-24. CDBG is a federal program that provides funding for local community projects, including affordable housing, infrastructure and public facility upgrades and supportive services. Through a cooperative agreement, the County of Marin is authorized to manage CDBG funds on behalf of the City of San Rafael. And under that agreement, Marin County is divided into three planning areas, San Rafael, Nevado and countywide. And funding is divided proportionally within those three areas. To allocate these funds on an annual basis, the San Rafael City Council submits recommendations for its portion of funds to the countywide priority setting committee, which is made up of city and town council members, a county supervisor and community members representing protected classes under fair housing laws. The priority setting committee then, in turn, provides recommendations for the three planning areas to the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors reviews recommendations from the priority setting committee and forwards its recommendations to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I just want to note that fiscal year 2023-24 is the second year in a two-year I just want to note that fiscal year 2023-24 is the second year in a two-year funding cycle. And the estimated amount of funding available for San Rafael decreased slightly from last year. In light of the reduction, the county identified one-time funding to keep San Rafael's allocation the same as last year at $485,000, which is especially important for our public service awardees to be able to continue to provide services as planned in year two. All applications received by the county were evaluated based on the national and local criteria and priorities that are listed in the staff report. And the following slides present the recommendations for the San Rafael Planning Area only. So we're not covering Nevado and countywide. There are two affordable housing recommendations, including a request from Canal Alliance for the remodel and upgrade of two low-income units at Marin Villa Estates at 153 Nevado Street. These units have considerable capital improvement needs. And the second request is funding for the countywide residential rehabilitation loan program, which provides approximately 15 to 20 low-interest deferred loans per year to qualifying low-income homeowners. There are two San Rafael capital improvement projects that we're recommending for funding, including renovation of the De Colores Children's Center and Safety Net Services Hub to increase its capacity to provide childcare and healthy meals to additional children from low-income families. And then the Department of Public Works has requested funding for three pathway improvement and ADA accessibility projects in the canal. And staff is recommending prioritizing funding for two of those walkways that are particularly important for families to access school and the local market. And then for community services, staff recommends year-two funding for five projects that total $70,000. And these are applicants that received year-one funding and have successfully accomplished their year-one goals and complied with monitoring requirements. They include Pickleweed Preschool, which provides preschool programming for 68 children in the Canal neighborhood. Home Match Marin is a roommate matching service that provides a means for older residents to remain in their homes and supplement their incomes while avoiding isolation. Extrafood.org distributes unused fresh foods from local participating businesses to lower-income families and supporting access to healthy foods while also reducing food waste. The Family and Children's Law Center provides domestic violence legal services for low-income families. And Legal Aid of Marin provides free legal assistance to extremely low-income renters experiencing eviction or threat of eviction. The city council has several options, and staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt the resolution approving the funding as recommended. That concludes my presentation, and I'm so grateful that Molly Cron is joining me tonight from the County of Marin, and we're available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Molly, for being here. Any questions, Vice Mayor, on this item?
Yes, thank you so much for the report. This is very helpful. My question is, there are like some really great organizations here, and a lot of the focus is around legal support. Do we know, like, for instance, if they are going to help like 70 families? Do we know what happens after? Do they help the families? Do they stay in their houses? You know, what was the outcome, I guess?
So I don't have those metrics offhand, but I think we can certainly request those and report back to you. Molly, I don't know if there's built-in, how that's built into the monitoring requirements? Sure. So we have biannual reporting that each of the, excuse me, each of the grant recipients reports to the county. So we can certainly provide that data to you.
Okay, that would be great. I mean, I don't mean to impose any more reporting to a nonprofit because I know how taxing that is, but it's always great to know, you know, when we are giving grants. I guess my second one was around Habitat for Humanity. I know that this is kind of like a program, I guess, for like, for the county, the loan program. Is it possible to, and I'm all about giving this type of assistance to anybody who needs them, but ideally, can we give them to the ones that they are in San Rafael?
Yeah, so this is a countywide program, and it serves residents within the City of San Rafael as well as the broader community. The program was previously run by the Marin Housing Authority for about three decades. And in the past year, they've withdrawn from, from the program. So Habitat for Humanity, they responded to a request for proposal to take on the running of the program. We're really excited about them as administrators because not only do they have the capacity to broaden impact, they also can do the work. And that was one of the real barriers and burdens on the homeowner was trying to find contractors that were vetted. And so this, this really sort of takes that burden off of our renters, sorry, excuse me, our homeowners. And the allocation of $85,000 is a little less than what has historically been dedicated from the San Rafael Planning Area because there were some cost savings last year during the transition. And there's, traditionally, there's about 15 homes that are served within the county as a whole. And historically, about a third of those have been from San Rafael.
Okay. So I guess my, my request will be, and I assume, I'm assuming that there are like matching funds. My, I guess my request will be, if we can make it like restricted to, like instead of one-third, that we can make it 100% to houses in San Rafael. But that's.
So the, the funds, these funds pay for the administration of the program. And then the actual funds themselves to finance the loans comes from a revolving loan fund. The revolving loan fund is about $6 million. Right now, we have about 1.5 million that's available. So we can't restrict it to San Rafael specifically because it is a countywide program that's funded by San Rafael, Nevado, and the countywide planning area.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Well, all of, every year, the hardest part of this is wishing that we had a lot more. They all seem very worthwhile. I have a quick question, though, about the Public Works project. Is, is this the first time that our Public Works Department has obtained funding for a project like this?
I know it is not the first time, but I think I'll let Molly extrapolate on that. Sure. We have a longstanding relationship with the Department of Public Works. Earlier on in the history of CDBG, these funds were used for ADA improvements. And the improvements were originally done in downtown San Rafael and other sort of the canal area. And then over time, those improvements were spread out more towards more affluent parts of the city. And so there was, there was some concern from HUD. And then there was also a reconfiguring of our relationship or a re-establishment of our relationship with DPW and understanding what these funds could really be used to support the city and enhancing the community. So over the past several years, some of the projects that we've partnered with DPW with these particular funds have been the Pickleweed Play Structures. So this was a significant funder of that project. In addition, we are wrapping up a project with DPW on replacing the generators for the pump stations in the canal to prevent flood. And then the two pathways that have been identified for this particular funding cycle are really core to the walking ability and accessibility in the canal community.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hill, who is also our representative on CDBG.
Yes, and I'll have comments about that in my remarks. I know it flashed by very quickly, for the sake of the community. I know that we, you know, there needed to be a one-time makeup to get to the 485,000. What was the allocation to, to make that difference so that we can get to the 45, so we kept our allocation the same in this, in this year?
Do you want me to take that? I think it was about $10,000. Yeah, yeah. There was a little over $10,000 that were identified for the San Rafael-specific planning area. And one of the sources of that was through a program income that we weren't expecting. So a previous program that had been funded paid us back a residual. And that was about $25,000 that we have, we spread across all of the planning areas. That did not make up the full gap. So our funding reduction this year from HUD was about $40,000, a little bit over. It was a 2.5% reduction. And so we are using some one-time COVID Assistance Administration funds that we have to sort of fill in the rest of that gap to keep all of our projects whole.
We may not necessarily have that opportunity in the next planning cycle.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. So the next plan is a two-year cycle. So next year, it'll be beginning of another two-year cycle. Do you have a sense, and this is always the hardest questions, but the HUD has already given a reduction. Do you think the same thing will happen next year? There'll be additional reductions to make this even harder on CDBG, the committee, and you to make these decisions?
It is a distinct possibility, especially given sort of the tenure in Washington right now or the conversations that are being held around the budget. There has been a proposal to cut HUD funding significantly by, by the House. So it is a distinct possibility that we could receive more cuts. It is, you know, worth noting that during the previous administration, it was, you know, recommended to cut funding every year, and funding was not cut every year. So it really kind of depends on who holds the purse strings. And right now, the purse strings are really held by the House, so.
But this funding has been allocated, so this funding for this year. So it's really for the next cycle.
Exactly.
And there would probably be some advance warning or sentiment before, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's very, we typically find out how much funding we have as the allocation process is underway. It's a very short turnaround. And we have found over the past couple of years that that turnaround is getting shorter and shorter. In fact, this year, they have delayed our submission because the budget was really so late.
Thank you. That sounds like an additional challenge. We know that you're up for it, but thank you. We will, I don't see any additional questions right now, so we'll open up the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone virtually that would like to comment on this item?
If you'd like to comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in by phone, please press star nine. I see no hands at this time. Just give it a few more seconds. There's no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring back to the council for their own comments. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much for the report and for the collaboration and for being here so late. And thank you so much for the clarification as well. I wish we had more, more, more funding, but I look forward to some of these projects. I think they are very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I concur with my colleagues, with the Vice Mayor's comments. And I am particularly happy with the longstanding relationship with DPW. And I will support the recommendation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hill, our representative on CDBG.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And to that end, I've had the privilege to work with Molly Cron now since I joined the council. This was one of my first committee assignments that I've, I've loved, absolutely. And Molly has invested so much time in making sure that I can drop into this space. But Molly is such a subject matter expert in how to navigate the sheer complexity of all of this to make sure that every constraint is navigated, to make sure that not just every part of the planning area is equitably divided, but also ensuring that the outcomes that the committee has set forth. And by the way, I'll interject, that the, the committee itself is 18 folks. You know, 11 representing our municipalities and seven folks who are community members that have stepped forward to participate and make sure that we're setting priorities in a way that is equitable. But to that end, the whole point of this is to make certain that folks in our community that need these services, need housing, get the outcome. This is, to me, the best part of government inaction is making sure that we're serving the people. So it has been an honor to continue to serve with Molly Cron and her staff. But thank you again for making sure that we have been allocated a right-sized amount of funding to make sure we get it, get it out in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. Fantastic comments, and we'll have those be the closing comments. There's nothing I have to add, other than I would request a motion on this item, if you would do the honor.
Thank you. I move that we adopt a resolution recommending Community Development Block Grant CDBG project funding for the fiscal year 2023 to 24 to the Marin County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin's Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. There's no item on our San Rafael successor agency. Thank you all for this stamina. This meeting is adjourned.